Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Thursday, February 21. Our agenda today is we will have first begin with the report of the Capital Outlay Committee. They'll be presenting the Capital Outlay Draft Plan for our consideration and then we will hear about some warrant, proposed warrant articles, the transfer of land to the Hingham Municipal Light Plant, special legislation for a tax checkoff for voluntary contributions for July 4 celebrations, which requires town meeting action, a proposed noise bylaw, and a petition article on a town farm study committee. After that, we will be voting on the Community Preservation Committee warrant articles that we heard a couple of weeks ago, and after Selectmen and Town Administrator reports, we will adjourn to executive session for a purpose of considering acquisition of real property, and we will not return to open session after that. So, that said, I guess we don't have any minutes to, I guess we don't have any minutes to do this time, right?
We actually, this is the first time apparently none of us had any grammar changes or comments. Way to go.
Well, then why don't we approve them?
Why don't we make a motion, we approve the February 19 Board of Selectmen minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, that was easy. Okay. So that brings us to the first proposed warrant article, transfer of land to the Hingham Municipal Light Plant.
Capital Outlay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Capital Outlay. I did not mean to skip over your report. Welcome, Ray.
Very quick, concise report.
We're trying to make this a quick meeting. Thank you. Maybe you could introduce yourself and the members of your committee who are here.
I'd be happy to.
For everybody.
He needs to be.
Thanks.
He gets set up here first. Good evening. I'm Ray Eisenbees, Chairman of the Capital Outlay Committee, and I'd like to, I'd like to first introduce the other members of the Capital Outlay Committee, going from my right to left, Libby Claypool, Sue Nickerson, Tom Piles, and Brendan Kirnann. There's one, there's one more member of the Capital Outlay Committee, Craig McCabe, who could not be here tonight, so we'll miss him. So, the, so what we're about to present to you is our recommendations for the 2004 capital items as well as the five-year plan. Before I do that, what I'd like to do is give, is give a little background so that you all have perspective of, of the magnitude and the type of capital expenditures that you would see from year to year. In typical years, we have about three and a half million dollars of requests. Now, if you look back over time, we should be, we should be funding about $2 million of these requests on an ongoing basis. Now, when I talk about this $2 million, I'm speaking about items that are funded out of tax levies and not items that are funded out of user fees and charges. Those are self-funded and for the most part, and the various departments live within their own cash flow to make those expenditures. In the, in the last five years, though, due to a number of factors, capital expenditures have averaged about $1,001,46. Now, this was greatly skewed by the fact that back in 2010, we recommended $125,000 of capital expenditures, and that was a result of the, of the recession and the fact that we were tightening our bill. Now, even if you pull this out, though, the, the average capital expenditures have been about $1,000,001, I'm sorry, $1,000,400 over the last five years. So, it appears that we have not been adequately funding capital expenditures for the last, the last five years. Now, in this year, 2014, our capital request initially jumped from $3.5 million to $4.3 million. This is a result of some large proposed expenditures, and more importantly, it, it's a result of the deferral of capital expenditures from previous years. And I think this is a trend that we will continue to see in the future, even in this improving economy. Now, these expenditures don't go away. They are just pushed down, you know, just pushed out the calendar, and there's a balancing act here. At the, at the very minimum, they will eventually have to be paid. The trick is, though, to make sure that we don't push it down the far, down the road so far that it's going to cost us a lot more because the item breaks, and we have to go through heroic efforts to, to replace it. So, I wanted to, I wanted to give you that perspective, and also, as we look at capital expenditures, and I think a lot of you that have heard this presentation the last couple of years have heard this, back when, when funds were, were tight, the Capital Outlay Committee came up with a list of criteria to help prioritize the capital expenditures. Now, these are guidelines. They're not, they're, they're not, they're not hard and fast, but it provides a framework in, in which we can evaluate the requests. For example, number one is if lack of the particular capital item puts citizen's safety at risk. I mean, that's a, that's a no-brainer. If the capital item is broken, if the capital item is core to the department's mission, in other words, the department can't function without it, if the capital item is still functional but repairs are required that would cost 25% or more of the new purchase price. Number five, if the capital item is substantially over its originally projected life and its failure would jeopardize the performance of the department's overall mission. And finally, if the cost of capital item can be recovered in three years or less. As you can see, the, the first three items are current issues, and items four through six are anticipatory. So, that said, let me discuss our recommendations in particular. Now, I think we're all bottom-line people, and let me, let me go to the bottom line just to, with my perspective.
It's a good place to start, yeah.
Yeah, let me, let me give you the bottom line, as I said. We are recommending capital projects of $2,537,422. Of that, $2,114,922 would be paid from tax levy, and $422,500 would be paid from user rates and charges. So, let's, let's go through department by department, and I'm going to highlight certain notable items, but I don't, I won't take the time to read each of the, of the items, but please, if anybody has any questions as we go through the departments, please, please raise them. First is accounting, MIS. The information technology assets, we're recommending $59,000. This is a, this is a typical ongoing item that represents replacement of, of technology assets. And an item that, that, that came up relatively recently is the townwide phone system. Back in 2012, the, the town began to plan to redeploy or deploy a new phone system. The system that, that the town has is its 3com, and it was acquired by Hewitt Packard, and, and HP is no longer selling the systems. It's being supported by vendors, and there's a concern, just in general, about how long that HP will continue to support the product and offer licenses. Now, I, I think that if, if there were not a precipitating factor, which is that the middle school is going to be opening in September of 2014, the town did not want to roll out a large number of new users on a, on an old phone system. So, that precipitated this, this request here. The, the total expected cost, and this would have to go through a bid process, is about $200,000, of which $45,000 was, was encumbered back in 2012, and the balance is $158,000. Now, there's $40,000 allocated in the middle school budget that can be used for this purpose, so the net, as you can see, is $118,000. And, and the final item for accounting is the Panasonic ToughBooks, and this, these are deployed in the, by the fire department in the emergency vehicles. So, the total recommendation for accounting, MIS, is $190,359. There's, and the treasurer's got a small request for a postage machine. And now the town hall. The first recommendation is Whitney Wharf. It's a replace, fence replacement. Apparently, it's a safety issue, so we're recommending $23,651 for that. $20,000 for town hall renovations and repairs. This is a fairly standard item that, that we see every year. And the third item, you know, prompted a lot of discussion within the, within the Capital Outlay Committee, and I'd like to, and I'd like to give, again, some background on this. When the Capital Outlay Committee made its recommendations for, for 2013, one of the comments was that, that we recommended that the, that the Capital Outlay Committee work with departments to determine their long-term capital requirements of town-owned real estate. Now, if you, if you look at, at the type of capital items here, they tend to be, I would classify shorter-term trucks, items with, with shorter lives than, than buildings, for example. But we thought that it would make sense to get an inventory of all the, of all the cap, of all the town-owned buildings and try to assign what is the right number that we should be funding each year to make sure that those buildings aren't deteriorating, and do it on an organized basis. Well, we were, we were happy to see that, that one of the, one of the items on the, that was proposed by, by town hall was a study of the town-owned buildings. And originally, it was put in at, at $75,000. Well, a few weeks ago, we find out, found out that that number probably more realistically, more realistically would be $225,000. So, we, that's a significant amount of money. So, so the approach that we took, fortunately Roger Fernandez was involved in this, and he came up with a plan to break the master plan study into, into three parts. The first of which would be evaluating some of the buildings that, that he thought would need more work or had not been evaluated thoroughly recently, so, and he expected that that cost would be $85,000. Included in this study would be town hall, Plymouth River Elementary School, Foster, the fire stations, both Central, all, three of them, Central, Constitution, and Torrent. And this fit in well because last year, Capital Outlay had recommended $25,000 to do a study for, for the South and the North Fire Stations anyway. So, that would be available to help fund the study. The, another building would be the Hingham Public Library, and, and the last building would be 101 Hershey Street. So, as I said, Roger thought that the estimated cost to perform this study would be $85,000. Now, the reason that we're recommending $60,000 for this year is that we would use the already encumbered $25,000 from the fire department study to offset that. So, again, the recommendation is sixty, $60,000. This is a big number, and then we, we recommended deferring the, the, the second two phases into 2015. Now, does anybody have any questions about that? We've spent a lot of time thinking about this, and I went through it very quickly. Thank you.
Well, I'm not going to let you off.
Great.
Let me understand, Irma, this is part of, I would assume, our objective to look at, look at all of this, and you mentioned the schools, and the schools are on board with this?
Yes.
And they, they agree that this is something that we need, we need to do? And the details of the work that we will do is available for us to look at?
Absolutely. And the, the, the key piece here is, this is not just a nice-to-have. This, this should become a working document.
Right.
And the committee envisions that, that at the end of the, the process, you're going to have year-by-year detail of what capital expenditures really need to, to be taken care of, and that could be added as a line item onto the capital analysis budget that you see here, that would be either, either funded, or, or either the expenditures would be taken care of, or in fact, there would be reserve set up if, for, for the future to take care of those expenditures.
So, we get ahead of the curve, is the idea?
That's correct. Because, you know, the sense is that we've been, it feels like, and probably, in fact, we are playing catch-up all the time, at least for the last couple of years.
Ray, why don't you read, and I apologize, I have a copy of the document Roger and I did for the two of you after it's laying on my desk. So, my apologies. Under town hall, do you want to just read that one sentence?
Sure.
That tells what kind of things, Bruce, this directly answers your question.
Yeah. Concentration will be on HVAC, roof, ADA compliance, exterior envelope, electrical flooring. And the, the comment was also, the building has not been evaluated since renovations in 1998.
No, I knew that. That we do. How about the library?
That would be the same kinds of things. We use that as an example. There's a rough draft, which Betty helped us with, of the RFP that's going to be going out, and plumbing is included also in this. So, it's, it's basically all the functions in a building, so we know what's facing us. Thank you.
Recommendations for total town hall, $103,651. Police Department, we're recommending $127,000 for the replacement of six vehicles. As you know, the police department has a regular replacement schedule that they follow, and, and even, it features, as you can see, in fiscal year 2017, there's a no-buy year for vehicles. They've got it set up that it's, it's cyclical like that. They're also recommending a replacement of one of the Harbor Masters boat engine, and one of their requests was the station remodeling. They requested about $50,000 to remodel the police station. Now, again, we're, we're looking very closely at expenditures, and we want to try to sort out ones that, that are more acutely needed. So, we're recommending about $20,000, well, not about, $20,750 of the 50. It represents funds that will be spent to refurbish the booking area, that will, that will increase efficiency and more importantly, improve officer safety. Basically, if you've been down there, the, when somebody is brought into the police station for booking, they're, they're moved from station to station. This way, there would, a counter would be set up that the suspect would be handcuffed and would move from station to station and not be roaming free, and it's more efficient because you don't need as many officers with a, with a suspect at that time. So, we're recommending for the police department, $165,750. Fire Department, we're recommending $438,000 to replace one of the, the fire engines, specifically E91. The, that particular engine was acquired in 1991, and assuming a 20-year life, which they do, it's about, it will be four years behind beyond replacement, and it's, it's got 116,000 miles. And it would seem that with the, that that's a lot of miles for local travel. So, we're recommending that. And then typically, you'll see fire hydrants turn out gear, and, and we're recommending expenditures for those items. And we're also recommending Station One, Central Station, we're recommending $20,000 to repair the, the roof and gutter. If you, you've seen it, that does need.
My understanding is that's eight fire hydrants is?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Well, it depends, well, not to go into the weeds too deeply, but it's depending upon how, how it's installed. If the, if the water main is, is deep, then there's more, there's, there are more funds associated with shorter ones.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I understood that.
So, total for the fire department, we're recommending $502,000. Public Works Highway, we're recommending a bucket truck for $135,000. Now, this is a large expenditure, however, this is a matter of safety. Apparently, there are some issues with it, with, with the actual mechanism, and the, and the management is concerned about its safety, so they need to replace it. And then we're also recommending three additional vehicles. Total recommendation for Public Works Highway is $382,000.
Ray, can either of the dump trucks be willed to, like Bear Cove Park or any, or are these pretty well done?
When these trucks?
Done, never mind. Never mind, I remember.
These are not the type of vehicles that we usually transfer to this. The dump truck is a much larger, it's a main, you know, vehicle.
Yep. But done?
Yeah.
Okay, never mind. You can't weld rust, right?
That's right. Public Works landfill, we're recommending, typically, the, the landfill will replace each one of its closed-top trailer each year, so we're recommending $50,000 for that plus $15,000 for trailer tires total. Expenditures for Public Works landfill, $65,000.
Ray, it says on the report here there are 2,000, but I noticed it says 2,000 on every single year, so is that just a typo or we're not replacing a?
Well, the four-wheel drive is down, is, says 2003, so, and there's a 1996 on the forecourt.
The top, the top trailer closes.
Yeah, you're.
I just think that, we're not replacing a trailer that's 14-years-old. I know we're not replacing it much sooner than that.
That's great.
Oh, okay.
Sewer Department, now, as you recall, these are funded by, by user fees. We're recommending repairs to two pump stations totaling $80,000, and service replacements for $50,000. This is an, this item is, again, trying to get ahead of the curve, and the sewer department is, is trying to replace service lines that will be under roads that will be repaired soon, so they don't have to go back in and dig them up. Recommending $162,500 for the sewer department. Elder Services, we're recommending $25,000 for a van. The library, we're recommending $20,000 for computers, and that's a typical replacement amount each year. And we're also recommending $124,428 for replacement of the heating system. This has been an ongoing discussion. It was, we had recommended it be funded last year and had, and the library had encumbered $74,000 roughly for, for that purpose, but when they finally started getting bids in, that was, the scope of work was, was much greater than they thought. So, this is, this $124,000 roughly is, is net of the $74,000 that was encumbered in previous years.
So, that's a very big number.
Very big number.
I'm not surprised. It's been so long.
Yes.
I know. What will we talk about?
I don't know. I talk about this every year.
It's the boilers I replaced.
That's right. It's right, it was, I think they've gotten 48 years of life out of these boilers, so.
I won't touch that number.
So, the total for the library is $144,428. Recreation Department, we're recommending the items that we, we would typically see, the fitness equipment replacement, also recreation equipment replacement and, and building rehabilitation. And again, this, this is funded from user fees, and the recommendation is $55,000. Sashore Country Club, there are a number of items included in the $205,000. Probably one of the most notable is that, is they, $60,000 in that number is requested to replace a sewer line.
Right.
That's, that's absolutely mandatory, and, and again, if, and they would expend these, these funds if in fact they had the excess funds to do so.
My understanding is they are spending other monies that they have to address the pool and the fence and other areas.
That's correct. That's correct. And probably the last, the, the department is the, is the school department. And the, the first, the first item is the Foster Elementary School, and we're recommending some, some expenditures to, to resurface and renovate basketball courts and to repair the facility, and also some energy saving expenditures, like for the Foster cafeteria relamp. That's $7,500, and the payback is in the energy savings. And also, a, a, we're recommending an energy management system repair for $10,000. The total for, for Foster is $32,500. Plymouth River School, again, it's, the expenditure there, $5,000 for gym lights, nothing for East, but there, in out-years, you're seeing that they're, they're anticipating some, some expenditures. South School, we're recommending a replacement of their energy management system for $136,000. We've, we had a number of discussions with, with the school department about, about, about this item. It is relatively large. The existing one does work, but it is, it's, it's an old system. It's written in DOS. It's difficult to, it's difficult to manage, and, and it comes with significant annual operating expenses related to it. So, at the end of the day, makes sense to recommend the $136,000. High School, again, you'll see the theme, efficient lighting projects for, for $39,000. There's a state mandate that will cause, that will cause them to repair the elevator, has nothing to do with its operation. It's the, it's, they have to encase it so that the elevator, the hydraulic fluid cannot And, and there's an item, they've had an ongoing problem with, with an odor in the science wing, and they've asked us, and we, we're recommending $20,000 for that purpose. So, the total for high school is? So the total for high school is, is eighty-two thousand dollars. And final, the final category is the school system-wide. And you can see typically there is instructional equipment, there's a replacement of a school transportation van for thirty thousand dollars. There's school technology, now that's, that's replacement. Hundred and sixty thousand dollars, two hundred and forty-three thousand. Copiers for twenty-five thousand dollars. And then there are some safety-related expenditures. Additional surveillance cameras, as well as updated radios for all schools. So the total system-wide, we're recommending is two hundred and ninety-five thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars. The total school is five hundred and fifty thousand seven thirty-four. When you add all of the departments up, we've already discussed, the, the total is two million five sixty-four four twenty-two.
On the schools, could you go back to roof repairs?
Sure.
Just since that's near and dear to our hearts.
Yeah, I know.
What, what is that they intend to do? Is these inspections or?
Well, they're, they're actually, given the, the number of buildings that they have, they, they find that, that, that each one of the roofs will have, have small leaks that they have to deal with. And this is a, this is not, not identified with any particular building, but there, but the approach that they take is that we're going to be spending this, so we might as well allocate it in each year. Now, this is, you know, the, the, the master plan study that, that I was talking about would get, get into the details here, so that we would have these things scheduled out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
No, no, he, Ray did that well, and you let me ask when I had the thought, so thank you.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
This is really very good.
Thank you.
Terrific.
Appreciate it.
I had a couple of questions, or just comments and questions, I guess. The Whitney Wharf fence replacement has been kind of kicking around for some time, and, and I just, not just whether or not to do it, but kind of what the, what it would look like, what, what the, what kind of repair is contemplated? Can you just share a little bit of that?
Yeah, it's, and I'm, I'm thinking back, we, we did get into the discussion of that, and it's, it's a.
There were a number of options, as I recall.
Yeah, and it typically, it looks like the black wrought iron, it looks like black wrought iron that is, that, that, you know, would, would fit in nicely with the, with the area.
So it's just remove everything that's there and replace?
Correct.
Okay.
I understand, though, the replacement is just on the, the town pier side of Whitney Wharf, not the whole pier, if I, if I understand correctly. And the idea is to replace the, the wrought iron that's been rotting out with some type of galvanized structure that won't rot out, and to tie it in with the eventual bridge so that it matches.
Gotcha.
Okay, okay. I was just curious about that. I'd just like to, I see on the out years for accounting, we have the website redesign, and just like to put in a plug for that. When next year comes, I know from being on Capitol Outlay, sometimes things get moved, and then they get moved, and then they get moved.
You've noticed.
Yeah, it's very, it's some, it's, it's, it's usually tempting and often very necessary to do that.
Yeah.
I just feel as, as the Board of Selectmen, I feel like we're in large part responsible for, you know, public relations with, with the citizens and helping them know what we're doing and helping them find ways to interact with their government. And the website is, gets more key to that every year. And our website has served us well, but it is getting to be behind, behind standard. I, I know that there are, we, we often, we get awards for our financial management and, and we get awards for this and that, we've never gotten an award for our website. I'm not saying I won an award, but what I'm saying is that I think that I have seen other towns that are ahead of us in terms of how easy it is to use and the, and mainly how easy it is to use, to tell you the truth. So I'm just going to put a plug in for that for next year.
Thank you.
It's the kind of thing that is, is easy to put off because it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not public safety, you know, it doesn't feel as, as weighty as that. But it's our job as the Board of Selectmen to make sure that our citizens can interact with their government in whatever way they need to, and the, the website just gets more important for that every year. So I'm just going to put a plug in for that next year.
Can I?
Probably get to that next year.
In view of Nemo, which we're going to talk about at some future date, I had discussion with, with our information tech, technology folks, and the communications mechanism needs to be available, not only internally, but externally. And whether that comes under the website redesign or the, or the, the townwide phone system, what became critical during the storm was a, a need for easier and better communications. To give a plug for the town of Cohasset, their police chief has a, has a Facebook, can, which he was able to communicate with everybody what was going on. It was much more difficult for us to do that. So there are some solutions that they've thought of, and I just want to, to Laura's point, people use that more and more, and we better make sure that we use that as a way to help get the word out. And it would make it easier for, I know, the light plant, which did a humongous job and a wonderful job, they, he needs, Paul needs to be out on the street. He doesn't need to be sitting in a room taking phone calls, so we need to have a way to make that work.
He was out. I can testify.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McMillan, for pointing out that there, there actually is a public safety component to it as well, that, which we have, which we did find out during the storm.
Yeah.
Can I, one question. Ray, how much was discussed about, again, in fifteen? The skateboard park cameras? I see that's under accounting. I would have guessed that would have been under police.
The reason it was under accounting is it's IT. We're going to use the cam, the IT department was going to put the cameras in and tie it into the, through the I net that we have running through town.
So more discussions next year.
And my final comment or question is, in fact, public safety-related, the generator connection for the senior center, and I, and I know you discussed that. And we had, that came up this year with, during Sandy, when we were considering setting up shelters and what they, what they would be like. It came up again during the last storm. And just for people who may not be aware of what the issue is, that the, the senior center was open during the recent storm as a, as a warming center for people who had lost power. But if the senior center were to lose power, it would no longer be a warming center, it would be a cooling center in winter, or a warming center in summer. And it's important for us that, that we, it is possible to open the high school, which does have a backup generator for the same purpose, but it can be, especially for example in the last storm, a overkill in terms of a shelter, because we, the people who, there were people who used the senior center, but it was in the single digits. But, but you want to have that capacity for people who need it. So these public safety things, I know when I talk with, with Chief Duff, it's always about, you know, how much insurance do you want to take out? And it's a very difficult thing, but I think what we are seeing is these storms are, I think, are going, are coming, the, the, what was a hundred-year storm is now a ten-year storm. What was a ten-year storm is now a one-year storm. We're going to see, we're going to have this need more and more often. And I know that both the police department and the fire department felt very strongly about the, the proposal to, to put the generator into the senior center, if only because that, that puts the shelter, the small-size shelter that we might need, next to the fire department, and next, next to the police department, so that they don't have to send somebody over to the high school when the high school's open to be a shelter. So these are all the issues that came up during this, and I said that I would make a pitch for the, the generator for, for the senior center, because I think it, it just makes so much sense. It also makes sense because the senior center is a much more, for people who, who might need to come, come to a, a shelter, they might often be elderly people, and the senior center is a, a more comfortable, welcoming place, a place that people might be more willing to come than to COTS in the high school. You might find less resistance. So it, there's a lot of reasons why equipping the senior center to be that kind of a shelter in, in, in an emergency like we've had twice this year could be a very important public safety expenditure, investment. So I'd wanted to bump it to the top of your public safety list. And I see that you haven't recommended it this year, and I just wondered what the committee was thinking about that.
Well, we, we obviously talked about that, because, you know, we have concerns about the, the senior center. What, that, one of the factors that we took into consideration was the fact that there is a town hall task force, and they're looking at utilization of, of the town, town hall. And we had heard that, that there might be some relocation or moving some of the departments around. The concern was not that we don't like the, the concept, but it, you know, sixty-eight thousand dollars is, is a lot of money, if in fact that there's going to be some reconfiguration there.
Okay.
That's, that's a good point, because Elder Services is right now examining what their future should be.
Yeah.
So, and it may not be here. That's, but you're right, Laura raised the issue.
That said, that space could still come in handy, in the, in the, no matter what it is, in the long run.
Because it's so close.
Right.
It's so close to the police department.
Yes, and to have more town hall on generator could really come in handy, even if it ends, doesn't end up being the senior center. So I'm still for it.
Thank you, duly noted.
Okay.
It's just where we locate it that we haven't decided.
Gotcha.
That's the question.
Okay, so any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Any questions or comments from, yes, Mr. McMillan? Could you come on up? And where's our, we need a.
Oh, where's our microphone?
I don't know where our microphone is, but maybe, could, could you come up and, Ray, point your microphone at Mr. McMillan, so the folks at home can hear him? Okay?
I didn't quite understand, I didn't quite. Alexander McMillan, seventeen Main Street. I didn't quite understand what the plan was for the fencing at Whitney Wharf. I heard the figure, which led me to believe it was not the kind of quality that some of us had hoped we would see at Whitney Wharf. Now, was it a hollow fence or was it a solid fence?
Well, it would be, you know, based upon the recommendation of, in, in this case, the, you know, the town, town hall.
What does town hall mean? I mean?
Let me see if I can weigh in a little bit here. I asked Roger Fernandez to look at this. This has been a discussion for us for quite some time, because, you know, the, the construction of the fence, when Whitney Wharf was redone, the footings of where the fence were were not either properly installed or the right material, and within a few short years, they've started rotting out. So, you know, you see some barriers there where we tell people we don't want, especially along the area by the town pier where we have the, the outflow that comes in. That's a fairly dangerous tidal change, and we don't want someone leaning up against that fence and falling in. Our councils will tell us that if we have no fence, we have less liability than if we have a fence, which, you know, has a little bit of a logical difficulty, because, you know, I think we're in the business trying to protect people, not protect liability. While we also are concerned about liability, protection of people is our first paramount issue. And so I, that's why I said, I think that the arrangement that Roger Fernandez has been working on with the Harbor Development Committee that's working on the bridge is to, as that bridge comes across on the Whitney Wharf, to extend with the same type of material up and down that side only of the pier to protect anyone from possibly falling into the waterway that would come underneath Route Three A, and use a much stronger material, but be consistent with what we think aesthetically we need in that area.
I don't quite understand what you're saying when you say a much stronger material. Is this a different type of fence?
Yes.
From the fence that was there, which of course was very inadequate from the very beginning, and I think the people who on the committee were unhappy with it. And when we got the M B T A to put in steel fencing, we told them we wanted solid fencing, and they said, well, the town put in hollow, hollow fencing over on their own property. And I said, I know, but we're, we're, we're hoping to sue those people, you know?
My expectation is that it's, it's solid galvanized.
Solid.
Solid galvanized.
Not, not hollow, the way the current fence is.
Correct. I just don't know whether it'll be that type of railing fence, or it'll be some other type of fence material, but I know that the structures on the bottom are supposed to be galvanized.
And, and not hollow, but solid.
Not hollow, solid galvanized.
Because this is what we have, the town has supported at two cemeteries now where we've replaced fencing with solid.
And we haven't had to replace them again. But yet here we are, fifteen years later, replacing this fence.
And should have done it ten years ago. But, so I'm glad to hear that it's going to be solid fencing, but I, I kind of wondering what you're getting for twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Because we're not doing the whole pier all the way around, we're just going to be doing the side that we consider a serious public safety issue. We don't want someone, you know, we're trying to promote traffic down there, and we don't want someone, small child crawling up. If they fall over on that side, you know, that could be a life-threatening situation for us.
I agree. I, I'd spend a lot of time down there, and, and if you, if you don't have the very sharp foot, you can kick a hole right in that fence now. I mean, it's just, it's just held together by rust in many places, so.
But we don't have fences throughout the rest of the harbor.
Good.
But we want to do it there because it's a public safety issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have comments or questions on the proposed Cavillot Lake Plan? Okay, great, thank you so very much, all the members of the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for all your work. And we will be taking this under consideration and voting on it next Thursday, I think, is that right? Thursday?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, next item on our agenda, and I'm sorry that we are running behind time, but it's good to. Go over the plan in great detail. Is Article EE for Town Meeting Warrant, Transfer Parcel from Track Four to the Hingham Municipal Light Plant. Gentlemen, are you, are you, are you the actual sponsors of the article? Because it's not in the book who the actual sponsor of the article is.
Betty said the selectmen have to be, right?
Yeah, we're the sponsors.
Oh, because it's our, okay. Why don't you join us and introduce yourselves and tell us what's behind this?
Walter Foskett on the, of the, a member of the Hingham Municipal Light Board, and I'm a resident at eighty-one Gardner Street.
Paul Henyu, General Manager of the Hingham Municipal Light Plant.
Tell us about the proposal.
Do you want to give a little history?
Yes.
I think that would be very helpful.
Uh, this, we, we started on this article probably four or so years ago. We began to hear that the town was interested in creating a regional police and fire dispatch, and it seemed like a good idea, but there wasn't room in town hall for it. And where we were situated in the building, right next to the police, seemed to make some sense. So we, we vacated to make room for the regional dispatch. We started looking for land, we started looking for office space for the office folks. The field guy folks work out of Cushing Street, and the office folks have worked town hall, and they've worked at a couple of places around. And we've always felt that it would make a lot of sense if both groups were together. So that's kind of the, how it got started. We ended up moving down onto Lincoln Street, and we pay rent there, and we got a good price for it, but we pay a lot more in rent there than what we were paying here. If we're there, coming up on four years now, we're not that far off of four hundred something K in rent that, you know, could have been used to, you know, keep, either lower the rates or, you know, other things. So we began to work with the town three or so years ago. We identified a couple of spots in the Bear Cove Park area that didn't work out. We kind of stepped away from it for a couple of years, and then we started it back up again, searching for land again last summer. And it always kind of struck me that, and I've probably said a hundred times, if you were to fly a helicopter over Bear Cove Park, you'd never convince me that there wasn't land, some, you know, there wasn't space for us in there someplace, because there's, there's a lot of open space. But a lot of that open space is designated for things other than a light plant-type facility. So we've, we've had a, a building there in the back end of the park for years that we've been using for cold storage with Sewer Department, and now the DPW in the Sewer Department. So that was the first place that we looked at potentially relocating to. We had it surveyed, the, the company we used delineated the wetlands, and there was certainly plenty of land there in, in the area of where we are currently located for, for a facility for us. But as we began to peel the onion back a little bit more, we found that it was designated, I think it's called public and open space. And, and, and I learned about the struggles that you folks have had. And, and, and I learned about the struggles that you folks have had trying to get land that is designated that way to be used for something else. So, then I began to hear about land, and this is probably three weeks or so ago, I began to hear about land that was formerly used by the Wildlife Center that could possibly be available. Irma and I went out there one day, we walked it. It, it looked like there would be enough land there. We spoke to Roger Fernandez, we looked at the plans that he had, looked like there might be enough land there. So, we had the survey, the gentleman who did the surveying for Building 14, look at it. We got those results last week and there is in fact enough land there for the size building that we would want. It doesn't encroach on any, you know, the conservation land. It's at that end of Bear Cove Park that we're kind of in the shadow of the DPW, if you will. So, we wouldn't be the first ones there, if you will. To us, it just makes an awful lot of sense that, you know, we could consolidate our operations, you know, that would free up Cushing Street for, you know, for, to be used for something. So, again, it's, it seems to make a lot of sense to us.
And interestingly enough, Betty is the one that put us on to the Wildlife Center. As I was going through the files, she came up with the thought of checking the lease on the Wildlife Center.
The which there is not one of.
Correct. That's where Paul and I got very excited and sure enough, they don't want the land, but it is in a perfect location. There's a lot more work to do and for every dollar they're spending on rent, that could be going into lowering the rate base for the electricity. Also, the co-location with the DPW down the road could perhaps lead us to some joint projects. And giving up having Cushing Street, which by the way, was taken by eminent domain, also thanks to Betty, which was very interesting piece of news to us back in 1960, so that the municipal light plant could go in there and put their transmission lines. But that building could be used for many things and we three will get to make a decision on it. But one of the things that in my mind, it would be perfectly suited for, or a thought, is to move traces to. It's great open space, it's in use right now, seven by 24 in some cases. So, I think it provides many, many potential uses. If they can move into the Wildlife Center area, it's already in the proper zoning and it really does look good at this point. And they don't want to enter, and don't let me speak for you guys, but I know you won't. They don't want to really go into another lease for the building on Lincoln Street.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that we did look at expanding Cushing Street, that, that area there.
Thank you.
And there's a footprint there, but it's a tight space and it would entail trying to acquire land on either side of the building. And even in that case, it's still a tight fit for bringing everybody down to that one spot. And the other thing about Bear Cove is that it's in an area where the traffic going in and out is the DPW traffic. There's not a lot of residents that close where it's going to have an impact on, on the neighborhood, surrounding neighborhood. That was one of the problems we ran into looking around early on. There's not very many pieces of land available in Hingham that we could, we could use which without causing some concern to the surrounding residents.
The, the other good point about having to move into the Wildlife Area, the building that's there now, the DPW spends, I'm not going to say considerable amount of time, but their frequent visitors boarding up the house that's there over and over as people get into it. There actually are campfires outside. So, cleaning that area up and building a nice facility for the light plant would be a very good thing for the town.
Again, thank you for Nemo.
For bringing, are you thanking them for bringing us Nemo?
Well, I heard this rumor, Paul, that's all. No, but thank you. You guys did yeoman's work and as I've, I got a call from a friend of mine down south and I think we had, let's see if I may say this right, we had people with outlights, a few, and they had fewer people with lights. So, that's a commendation.
It was a tough storm.
It was a tough storm and we're going to talk about that, but thank you for your response. You know, we have, as I mentioned earlier, we have issues with Elder Services and we have issues with police expansion, et cetera. So, there is a bigger part of a master plan here that we need to think about and I think we need to digest this, just to give you a heads up on that. And there are other properties that I know have, we've discussed, but you have reservations about them and I think that's, that's a good thing. I know paying rent, the way you've been paying it is an issue and as long as you can help us give that back to the ratepayers, that, that gets my attention. So, that's a, that's a good thing. And Cushing Street, I am assuming is, would pass inspections for other uses, for all potential uses? Do you know that?
Well, I don't know about all potential uses. You don't put an operating room there, but, you know, it's, the, there, as best I know, there has not been any underground fuel stores there, so you wouldn't have that. As I think about the building, I don't remember seeing any asbestos in there.
What about PCB storage from?
No, we, they, yeah, when the, when the light plant converted from 4KV to 138, you know, years ago, any transformers that may have had PCBs in them have been long gone. Any transformer that is hanging on a pole now would have been put in after the conversion and after we stopped buying transmission, or installing transformers that may have had them.
The survey of that building is in the Phase Two. And Roger and I, when we did this $80,000, if we feel that that's going to extend into the Phase Two and the light plant building would be the first one to be done after that. And that should tie into their schedule because we're looking, it'll take them about six months-ish, give or take, less with luck, more with no luck of getting all the permitting. And then in that time, by the time they begin building, we should have the survey done of the building. But they're using it every day, so.
Yeah, and, you know, during the storm, you know, the, the place was occupied all night long.
Nothing fell off.
Nothing fell off.
Was the least, on the, on the street at 14?
14.
End of 14.
Help me understand the, the current arrangement. Cushing Street is, belongs to the light plant?
Belongs to the town.
Belongs to the town? And you pay rent for it?
Pilot.
No.
It's the pilot.
It's all, it's all.
You pay a pilot.
It's just the condition is that when we stop using it goes back.
Right.
When we declare it surplus, it comes back to you.
And did you pay rent when you were here?
No.
It's all wrapped into the pilot payment.
Well, when they were in this building, they paid part of the cost to this building. We paid a minimal rent compared where we're paying.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so it was like apportioning out the costs of running the building to your, and that was separate from the pilot payment?
So, you know, we had this, you know, I would say smaller space and we paid proportionally.
Okay.
And before we moved in here, we had the house on Elm Street.
Yeah.
Which went back to the town.
Yes.
And was sold.
Yeah. And the, what, what exactly, is it zoned over there at the Wildlife Center? What's the zoning? Isn't that, isn't it, isn't it open space?
School parcel.
School track, I think.
But isn't it, isn't it open space, what am I, official and open space zoning?
Yeah.
So, but you're official, so.
It works.
That's probably what we're.
We do not need to petition the legislature and ask the Department of Interior as we did with the other parcel.
I know, I'm talking about zoning. Zoning.
Official and open space.
Official and open space. So, have you, the official and open space has some pretty, pretty hard-to-meet requirements on setbacks from around when you did the, your look-through at what you would need and how much land there was? Do you meet this?
Setbacks do not, are not an issue.
So, you're able to meet those?
That's correct.
Even the official and open space setback, because it's crazy, it's like 100 feet or something?
And they've got, believe it or not, that's why we have the survey done.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we didn't want to come to talk, we didn't want to be talking to anybody about it if it wasn't going to work.
Yeah, okay. No, yeah, that's great. And is this lot, 4.34 acres, does it have lot lines? Is it, is it divided from the, the rest of the land that's under control of Board Selectment or, or not at the moment legally?
It's, it's under control of the Board of Selectment.
I know, but in terms of, some of it, if we pass this article, some of it will go to the light plant and some of it wouldn't. Do we know which, do we have a line that shows what, what your lot would be?
Is it subdivided out of the rest of the parcel?
Is it subdivided yet? Is what I'm asking.
I, I know that he was out there, I didn't ask that specific question, but I paid the bill and, you know, I know he delineated the wetlands. I would presume that he would have, you know, marked off as well.
What I'm asking is, is it, we would have to do, to sep, we would, we need to create legally a separate lot through a Form A process or something like that to give part of it so that we would know what it was we were actually giving. It would have to have a lot line, you know, like a, like your, like the lot line around Cushing Street.
And I think they've got that as a result of the survey, I think. If they don't, they can.
But we haven't gone through a Form A process to create this lot.
Correct, correct.
I'm just trying to figure out where that, where that.
Yeah.
Because you would have, had to ask us to do that since it's our land. So, we have not done that. I'm pretty sure we haven't done that. Okay, I'm just trying to figure, figure out where we are with this.
They'll, they'll go forward and do that.
So, but what you do have is a drawing of what you want it to look like, but we don't have that.
I have one here.
Oh, good. Can we see it now?
And is that the one that's superimposed where you put the tentative drawing? It's pretty cool. It really, we were very pleased.
Well, you want me to?
Well, while they're setting up, I know we're going to talk about the storm Nemo later, but while they're here, I'd like to let them know that I heard from a lot of my colleagues, town managers in the areas around us, and they wanted to know why power was restored so quickly in Hingham and not in the other surrounding towns. And I suggested to them that if they had a municipal light plant, maybe they could control those processes better. So, folks, you're the envy of the surrounding communities and I want to let you hear that while you were still here.
I, I heard from one.
Not to mention the many, many comments from, from citizens, many, many, many.
Lots of positive accolades, which is always a nice thing.
Can you help us locate ourselves?
I don't think they can see that at home.
I can't see it from here.
I can't see where you are either.
I can't see you, Paul.
That's not his fault.
There you go. So, this is the outline. This is where some cages are from the Wildlife Center. And then this is where the building would be. It's a, when we started looking at this a few years ago, we had an architect, when we hired somebody to, when we looked at it for possibly Cushing Street, we had somebody draw something up for us and he said about a 15,000 square foot building would work for us. So, we're using that same number now. This is where that 15,000 square foot building would sit, you know, the parking, this is the, the road, the DPW is over here. This is building 12, is that where?
Yes.
So, you know, there is already a road that brings you to it, the road that kind swings around the back of the DPW. The how, the, the present of what was the Wildlife Center is in here where we would, you know, we've taken that down to put our building up. I hear that right here exists a Wildlife Center.
Need to go walk it.
This line here is the 100-foot buffer that you were talking about. So, you know, there's plenty of room for us here to slide it down a couple, I mean, it needs it now. You know, we're envisioning you would come in, the trucks would drive in, the building would be here and then they would come back out this way and go back out to that same road.
Okay, the 100-foot buffer, is that the wetlands buffer? The buffer from the wetlands?
It is the wetland buffer.
Okay, so that's not the buffer, the zoning buffer? That's something completely different.
Well, zoning buffer, wouldn't that depend on your, what your plot lines were?
Yes, that's my point exactly, is I, without knowing what the.
Apparently with the, it doesn't look like it from here that the existing Wildlife Center had a delineated lot.
It did or did not?
It doesn't look like it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe it does.
We're going to have to go to the planning board and.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. And I guess I was just drawing your attention to, once you, once we do that, there is that 100-foot setback for official and open space from the lot lines that you have to have.
But that can also go outside of the, the environmental buffer zone.
Yeah, I mean, they're, the two things don't have anything to do with each other. They might be the same or they might not.
It's not 100 for the buffer for the wetlands and then another 100.
No. Well, depending where your lot lines are, obviously, you know, if we don't know what the lot lines are, it's hard to say what impact the setbacks might have. But you could always ask for, go to ZBA and ask for a variance or, you know, or something like that. I don't know how.
Well, we fully expect to go through the whole.
I don't know how likely that is, but, so, and you would take the existing building down?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
A house.
Yeah, right.
Charming and quaint, it is.
Well, I, I have to say, you, you guys have been beating your head against the wall trying to figure this out for about four years and of all, all your ideas so far, this is my favorite. I think this, for, for one thing, it really is a terrible liability and attractive nuisance to have that building back there unoccupied. And I really, really would like to see something going on there that is valuable to the town and not just a nuisance and a liability. And so, I, I feel like there has to be, got to be a way we can make this work. To me, it's, it's very appealing, you know? It makes sense to have it over there near the DPW and it's, you know, it's a, trucks come in and out already, so, you know, trucks is, it's a good place for trucks because we already worked that part out and.
Right, you know, the utilities are relatively close by from when the DPW came in, so that's, that's a plus.
Right. My concern though is that for, and I know I spoke to you about this on the phone, Paul, previously a couple of weeks ago, that this is coming up very late in the game for us to be, to, to feel confident about going to town meeting, to ask them to transfer their property because we, I don't feel like we have a good enough grip on, we don't even know where the lot lines are. And we, so I feel like you would definitely have to have that and it's, and I don't feel like it's far enough down the road for us to, to do that right now just because of where it hits us in the town meeting cycle. I really like this proposal. I think this is, will be a great place for the light plant. I'm not, just not sure we can hit it for this town meeting, so I'm hoping that we could find a way to keep working on this project. But I'm not, I, I don't feel like I, knowing what we know now with not even knowing where the lot lines are and how the, the zoning and all that works, I don't feel like I could recommend it at a town meeting because I don't have a good enough grip on what it would be or, or how, or how it would work. That's how I'm feeling right now, anyway.
Since we don't have a, obviously a fixed timeline on what it's going to take to get it through the permitting process and the, the lot lines and that sort of thing, couldn't the transfer be contingent upon that approval happening subsequently to the vote?
Well, actually, that's one of the things that I, I was thinking about, recognizing, you know, your concerns, Laura, that, and knowing that Advisory Committee is going to react also to a late proposal and they got a lot on their plate. But frequently, development deals happen where the property owner gives permission to the prospective developer to go ahead and move through the permitting process and, and then makes the transfer subject to the successful permitting. And I don't see any reason why you couldn't make that arrangement with the light plant. Ultimately, you're going to have to go to town meeting if you want to transfer officially land to them. Although, I'm kind of, just an observation, if you don't own Cushing and the selectmen own it.
Maybe we could do it the same way.
We could do it the same way. I think what you really need to hear is whether the selectmen think this project has merit for you to go forward and I, I think I'm hearing that they do.
Well, I, I do.
Would you say we don't, maybe we can do it the same way, maybe we don't need town approval?
Well, has it worked out on the Cushing Street thing? I mean, was there?
That was.
It was, if you read.
I don't think any of us were there and I've been on.
Yeah, and we're all asking each other, "Do you pay rent? Who owns it?" You know, so clearly there hasn't been a problem where we would know all that stuff.
Betty did find all the documents.
You know how Cushing Street is held by the town or?
It's in the documents.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
Yep.
So maybe that's another route, you know?
The advantage to getting it passed, you know, not knowing how, it might not take that long to get it through, and the sooner, if it's passed at town meeting and we do the subsequent permitting, the advantage is, is that if it's, if the permitting process takes half of what we think it's going to be, then we're that much ahead of the deadline to get out of Lincoln Street and getting the building up and done.
What's your drop date?
It's a matter of efficiency.
But if we had an agreement like the one that we had about Cushing Street, we wouldn't have to go to town meeting at all.
If that's the case, then, but I don't know if that's the case.
Well, there is an issue, I understand, there is an issue regarding Cushing Street.
What issue?
An issue as, as an issue in terms of how you would transfer it back, and the Warren article would have to address that because there's property on there that's yours, not ours. And, and that's a discussion I had with an attorney. We've just got to get it, that all sorted.
Although there's, I don't think the light company has a title to that property.
No, not the land. It's the, it's the, it's the buildings. Yeah, it's the buildings. So that's, that's got to be in the Warren article in order, that's got to be clarified. So I think these kinds of questions, I mean, maybe there's a way we can do it, as Laura says, where it doesn't need to go to town meeting.
Contingent.
Or not, or just the same arrangement, whatever the arrangement we have with Cushing Street.
This one did say, the land was taken, well, I, it's rather lengthy, but it was at a town meeting in 1960 to take by eminent domain for use of the light plant. The perpetual easement over the land, which is where they are.
No, they're not.
And then Betty, in here was the deed, the town owned it.
I think the situation may be similar to that of Hershey House. When, when the school committee was through with Hershey House, they voted that they no longer had need for the property, and that went through town meeting then to transfer control from the school committee back to the selectmen. And this may be the, the same situation. I'd have to check that with the town council.
Does it say in there, I remember that there was a town meeting vote to?
To give it to the light plant.
Town meeting to take a man.
I think it also went through town.
Well, yes, that was an article, it was a town meeting vote to take a man of domain, but it was never officially transferred to the title of the light plant.
I don't think the light plant's statute can hold title of towns, which is why we came to you folks last year for the easement on the MBTA, you know, we don't hold the title.
So then, on this piece of property, you're not actually looking for the selectmen to transfer fee title to the land, but rather designate it as a light plant use.
It's control.
It's control.
Right.
Right.
And does that require a town meeting vote? That's my question.
Betty's nodding her head, yes.
I think so. It does, okay.
Wouldn't it be safer to go ahead and do it? I like Walter's idea of writing up the recommended motion as contingent upon receipt of successful permitting. And I'm sure by town meeting, we could get the plot plan drawn, because I think it's nearly drawn now, and whoever.
Well, my, my issue is not so much concern about whether or not the permitting would be successful, as more, I feel like I'm in the position of being asked to say to town meeting, this, this project is worthy of support. And I don't really have a clear idea what it is yet because I don't know what the lot lines are and.
Well, I mean, we could have proposed lot lines before we go to the, the planning board or the ZBA if we have to make changes.
Of course, you would, you would have to.
And as I said, we could have a, the transfer contingent upon meeting all the requirements that need to be met over the course of the year. So I think, you know, in terms of efficiency, timeline.
You know, I'll just put it right on the line. I'm most concerned about what is the lot that we're actually talking about. That's, you know, because, because the, the whole area there was subject, as you know, to a plan that was done in 2000 by the Bear Cove Master Planning Committee, setting out, well, this will go here and this will go there and so forth. And that area was set out for them by the Wildlife Center, and that, that needed has gone by, so that's a perfect, perfect place to find a new use for. But I just want to be sure, I want to see the lot line so I know that the, all the other issues that were laid out in the master plan are still there.
We used Roger's master plan from that plan, because one of the things we were concerned about, we were bumping, we thought we were going to go into the selectmen's parcel, but it's nowhere near that, that there is sufficient land.
Is there land between this lot and the selectmen's parcel?
Yeah, yes.
From here to here. This is the selectmen's lot, this is the selectmen's lot up here, and this is where we are down here. So we have, we have, this is the 100-foot, so this is the edge of the wetlands, this is 100 feet, and then the selectmen's parcel is even further than that. So we're nowhere near.
I would feel better about voting for this if I could have the, you know, the proposed plot plan drawn out so I could see it.
Well, I, I thought you were saying, was it like laid out in the woods out there?
No, 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 no.
No.
Now, I don't know.
No, just.
Well, you said it's a laid out.
I meant in the, I meant in the, you know, the, a plot plan like.
The lines have been drawn on this.
The, the lot, the lot lines?
The parcel lines.
Oh, okay, so.
Has Susan seen this?
Okay.
I haven't seen it.
You know, we have another issue here. You know, we have a land use attorney who should review this before we vote it to make sure that it's meeting both sides of the equation. Because as I said, there's land on Cushing Street that's supposed, or property on Cushing Street that has to be addressed, coupled with, you know, how, how is this transferred? I just think we can, we, the advisory, I wouldn't want to recommend to advisory if we don't have those answers, and we have time to answer those, so.
Susan Murphy, the attorney, she put the language together for the Warren article, so she's, I don't believe she saw these plans.
No, that's, that's what she needs to say.
Can we get an electronic copy of the plans?
Within the wake.
Can we get an electronic copy of the plans?
So, how about we, let's take this under advisement and revisit at our meeting next week, and in that time, we'll work with, you, you guys can work with Ted to. Get, get all the details that will make us feel comfortable, or maybe talk to Susan about contingent language or, or something like that.
So, I know what I'm supposed to be doing next week. What is it that you want?
Talk to Ted. We'll, we'll tell Ted what we're looking for, and he can help you.
I think it would help if the audience knows it too. So it's basically the plot plan.
I'm looking for the plot plan and, and review by Susan Murphy of that, of that parcel when, when we know what it's proposed to be.
And to make sure the language encompasses exactly what we intend, which is a transfer back. I mean, she was under the impression when I just happened, she mentioned it in passing to me some time ago, that there was an issue around the property on Cushing Street and how that would be addressed. So, and whether, I said, well, does the Warren article have to include that so that it's clear to the town what they're voting for? It could, I don't know, so let's.
And Betty and I discussed that at great length also, and I know she discussed it with Susan as well, and the light plant's attorney. We can and we don't need to, and, but I, I think it would be best if we did address it, that it is very clear that the land and buildings are reverting back to the town for its disposal.
That's right. That's, that's what I was.
And then if we wanted contingent language, she would be the one probably to draft that.
And that would be in the recommended motion. So just the plot plan, have the attorney and have Reuben, the Reuben and Rudman attorney, Deidra, whose name I cannot remember her last name, she's very good, thank you. And then.
And make sure the language. And make sure the language explains exactly what's happening here.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
Cushing Street back and all of those allegations.
And anything else that comes up.
Yes, I mean, I'm going to go home tonight and, no, seriously, I'm going to go home tonight and think, well, what about, and then I'll call Ted and you guys can figure it out.
Yeah, they all say or act on anything relating there too, so.
Recovered whatever it is.
Whatever that is. We just want to make sure that it stands.
Okay, anybody in the, else in the room have comments or questions on this proposal? Okay, well, thanks for coming in, and we'll, we'll pursue it.
And Walter, I sent Paul a copy of the documents that Betty found.
Okay, and the next item we're going to discuss is special legislation to create a voluntary checkoff box on tax bills to make contributions to the July 4th celebrations.
Hi.
Hi, please join us.
Thank you. I'm Keri Murphy. My husband is the chairman of the Fourth of July Parade Committee. I've been participating on the committee for about four or five years. He's been on there seven or eight years. And one of the things that we struggle with is the fact that there are not funds supported by the town necessarily to let us go forth with the parade. We have to raise all the funds for the, for the participants, all of the paid vendors, the bands and different organizations. And so what we'd like to offer is the opportunity for our citizens and residents of Hingham to be able to utilize a checkoff box on what comes with now. For instance, an example, I just got my bill today, it's a checkoff box to add a fifth box that would allow people to contribute to the Fourth of July Parade Committee. The, the funds are already, the account are, the accounts are already set up, so there's none of the background work that needs to happen because we already go through payments coming through town hall, et cetera. And we feel it's not a big effort to make the change. I did a little mock-up demonstration of what it might be. My residential tax bill happened to be a pink one, so I just want to show you that.
Put it on the screen here.
And for very little effort, I think it might be a great opportunity for us to be able to have people solicit and, and donate to the parade fund. The parade costs about $30,000 a year, and it's, I think, a very great town favorite. I think the town really, really appreciates it. It, it gives us a lot of notoriety. It's the only one in our area. And we just think that we should have an opportunity to have people, when we have the opportunity to get right in front of somebody because their tax bills come into their house, that they see this, to acknowledge the fact that funds need to be raised. And so we'd like to ask for a box on the form so that people can submit their funds.
Okay. Comments or questions?
Sure. Good to see you, Keri.
Hi, Bruce, how you doing?
Good, good. Thank you. Thank your husband for the work you do on this. Have we talked to the treasurer-collector about this proposal?
I have not.
Okay, because I understand we have.
I spoke to Jean. She, she submitted something late this afternoon, it's evidence of what she collects on the other checkoffs, that it's written back of the Warren article in your book. She also gave you a.
Okay, so what we see is donation total in 2012 was $4,600 for, well, $4,700 for each of the four categories that we currently have. Checkoff boxes for, what we have, checkoff boxes for is tax, scholarship fund, education, tax aid to the elderly and disabled, and veterans in need. And those four account for last year $4,700 worth of donations, which is up considerably from the difficult years, that went as low as $1,100 in 2007. So we can see that it does really swing with the, with the economic times, not, not surprisingly.
No, I just think, I mean, it's another box, and we, you know, I don't know how much money, have you done any research to indicate how much money this might generate, or is that?
This is the first time I've gotten the numbers. Thank you very much, Betty. We didn't know, but we knew it was exposure that we could get to the residences.
Have you thought of doing an insert in the light plant bills?
I have done that. I already executed that.
You did?
Yes, we, we netted around, the first year I did it was probably $800, and then the next year, I think, but last year we got about $1,400. So that, that's not bad, you know, and I write a note and I really try to stimulate the people who happen to reside along the parade route, et cetera, who have parties and such, and say, you know what? You know, you go to a Celtics game, you're going to spend 200 bucks, can't you send in 20 for the parade, you know, because you've got 100 people on your lawn? So, but so, yes, I have. So, yeah, I initiated that. Thank you. I know the discussion kind of varied a little bit with, you know, it's a fifth box. Somebody's going to ask for another one and another one. Well, maybe we just deal with that when it comes. The nice thing about this is it is a very positive aspect for the town. It's certainly, you know, it, it's a feel-good type of thing, so that I think that people may want really to be able to contribute, and it just gives them the opportunity to do so. We already do have, for instance, the light plant insert that goes in, so the town is already dealing with checks that are coming in individually, plus we have other fundraisers. So they're already handling our accounts, if you will, separately. So I don't think there's going to be an undue burden for them to take on any additional contributions there.
Well, you guys have a tremendous job to do every year raising all this money, and I know it. It's, it's a big job, and the results are always so wonderful, and we all appreciate the hard work that gets done. I'm really happy that you're getting as much as $1,400 off of that insert in the light plant. When I asked myself this question about, well, it's another box, what does it mean, I asked myself, well, where would we draw the line if there was another one and another one and another one? And what I came up with was I took a look at the four categories that we have, two for education and one for tax relief for people who need it, and one for veterans in need. And it struck me that, you know, much as I love Fourth of July celebrations, these four things are, are needs, and, and the parade is a want, which I want very much, by the way. And so in some ways, that, that seems to me like a, a place where I, I would want to not be putting wants next to the needs for fear that the needs would suffer to some degree. You're doing, it sounds like you're doing better with a light plant insert than you would with a checkoff box, competing with all these other needs. And so I, you know, I think I'm leaning towards, towards saying sadly, I think probably this is not the right route for the Fourth of July Committee from, from my point of view. And I know how, how hard you work, especially, I know back during the hard years when all these contributions were, I remember how hard it was to raise the money for the parade and how, and how much work you put into all of that. And I guess what I'm thinking is the, there is a, there is a diminishing returns issue here with the check, checkoff boxes. And the treasurer did tell me that she has seen the donations as a whole drop off when they add a box, because people get a little, a little overwhelmed with the number of, of choices that they feel called upon to make. So I, I guess I would have to say that regretfully, I'm kind of leaning against this at, at this moment, but I have not totally made up my mind, so.
Well, I think there's, there's an issue here on, as the diminishing return. Some of the longer standing checkoff boxes, the taxpayer scholarship and the education, have been diminishing. And the newer ones are generating. Perhaps that evokes another way to do this that we haven't thought of yet, but, you know.
Rotate check boxes.
A lottery? Oh, gosh.
Lottery, but I mean, you look at what happened, the Veterans Council, which we added in, the Veterans in Need, we added that three years ago, and that commands most of the money that, that comes in. So got to think it through. Is it worth the effort and the costs? And that's something, that's why I ask about the treasurer-collector. How does she do it and how?
I agree that it would not be, it would not be a big deal to add it, and that it would really wouldn't add to costs or anything like that. But I'm, I'm not sure the, the returns would be worth the, the downside of putting another box on.
I'm going, I'm going to echo what Laura said, because when I first saw this, I thought it was a great idea. And then the more I thought about it is, where do we draw the line? We could have as many as 10, 12 boxes, all very worthy. And her point, I think, is very important, that these are really needs, these are groups of people that truly need the money. And I'd rather see you go back to maybe reinventing the golf, the selectmen's golf tournament. That has happened. It's, I don't think it's under the cause of selectmen's golf, but it, we did that also. Oh, good, because I'm not sure any of the three of us would, I think we would do nothing but harm to the beautiful golf course.
I always felt guilty when the selectmen's golf tournament came up because, yeah, I was not going to make much of it.
You know, you pay for the use of the whole course. You might as well use it, from one side to the other. But I think you would get much more money there, and as much as I'd like to see this box, I don't know what we say to the next person in who has, and maybe it's the library, and maybe it's the food pantry.
Right, right.
How do you, where do you say no? So I'd like to think about it some more too, maybe get some public opinion on it.
Yeah, maybe we'll take this under advisement as well and, and take, take another look at it next week.
I appreciate that. I think that the opportunity, because it's such a different type of a donation, that it might draw more attention. I understand the concern about dilution of the other contributions, but, you know, we pull in 20,000 people, and it's, it's just a delight, right? It's just such a wonderful event.
Absolutely.
That we work very hard on. And, and we just would like another avenue that we can reach our constituents and, and offer them the opportunity to contribute.
I think that's what you're hearing is if there's some other way, let us give it some thought, because it is a worthwhile event, and we all contribute to it. So let's see if we, how do we enlarge that base? And is this the best way? That's the. And is this the best way? That's the question.
Right.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We will come back to this next week after we've given it some thought.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. This brings us to the article on the Town Farm Study Committee, Article MM.
The noise by law.
This is a petition article.
That one before the noise.
Noise by law.
Oh, wait. Thank you for keeping me on track. People are just not reading my agenda tonight. The noise by law. Sorry, Beth. Please join us and tell us about your proposed by law.
Turn that toward you.
I'm Beth Rockoff at 36 Pleasant Street. I don't know if Deputy Chief Olson wants to join me. He's been involved with this. He's welcome if you want. Come sit in the hot seat with me. I'm not very good at this, so I have written some comments, and I hope it's all right that I read it.
Great. That'd be great.
A noise ordinance already exists in the town of Hangham, and the warrant article simply extends this article to the entire town. I first became aware of the concerns about noise in town about two years ago, when I was putting together plans for an outdoor wedding for my daughter in our yard. And we wanted to put up a large tent and have band music in the evening. The building department gave us permission to put up the tent, but there was no applicable noise policy for the area. I worked with the police department and my neighbors to come up with a reasonable solution to have a wonderful event. However, I learned then that the town did have a noise ordinance, which was approved at town meeting in 1987 for the industrial district, the shipyard, and at the recommendation of several neighbors. Again, in 2006, this noise ordinance was adopted for the conservatory park area and the DPW, when the DPW was moving to Carlson Field and Carlson Fields were being constructed. The article for you simply applies this to all areas of town, so that all Hangham residents can have the same noise protection. Bruce Rabuffo thought that this would be an appropriate way to address this for the town, and Chief Perino and Deputy Chief Olson felt that it would be helpful to provide clarity for the police department. So, with the assistance of several town officials, including Town Council Susan Murphy, this warrant article was then drafted. As it now exists, exemptions are permitted, if authorized. The definitions, exemptions, waivers, and violation characteristics were added to make sure that the warrant was manageable and enforceable. To reiterate, this warrant article merely takes a noise ordinance that exists at the shipyard and the conservatory park, and applies it to the town, giving all residents the same noise protection. I want to thank many people in the town government for helping me put this together. In particular, I would like to acknowledge Selectman Bruce Rabuffo, Town Administrator Ted Alexiades, Town Assistant Administrator Betty Foley, Town Legal Counsel Susan Murphy, Chief Mike Perino, and Deputy Chief Glenn Olson, and Lieutenant James Taylor, all from the Police Department, the Zoning Board Administrator Sue Eddy, the Building Department Administrator Jean Keough. And if I've neglected anybody, I'm really sorry. But I also would like to thank you for listening to me, and I hope you'll support this warrant article merely to extend a current noise protection to all citizens in town. And if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Okay. Comments? Questions?
Well, Bruce, you, why don't you start, since you were very helpful to Beth?
Well, I think...
I also have some couple of copies. I don't know if you guys have them, but if they don't, maybe...
We have copies, so maybe there are people...
Can you give your comments? They're very well-written to Kristen, so she can do a copy paste.
I will, but I don't know if other people in the audience might like copies of the warrant if...
Sure.
Sure. Why not?
The issue came to me, I had a, this goes back a number of years, and I knew we had one where I live in Conservatory Park, but there was a builder a couple of doors away who had decided at 6 o'clock on a Saturday morning that he was going to construct. And the way it got addressed was to the building commissioner, whom I awoke later in the morning, to get over and have a conversation with him. And then, we got into this issue that we have a disparate, that we have a disparate application of the law. And that is, certain selections, sections of town have something, and others don't. In addition, it comes to the issue with any of these, on the issue of enforceability, and how can we make this an enforceable item? So, that's when we, I went to Mike and to Glenn and said, "Is there a way we should address this?". And that is the, how this came about. And then, furthermore, just one last incident was an issue that happened at the shipyard, where it became unclear as to what were the noise levels for an outside event that was going to go on into the evening. And it became somewhat confusing, and I said, "We need to just bring some clarity, so it's uniform across the town". And that's what started the research to say, "What are other towns, too, and how do they address the issue?". So, as a result of that, and thanks to the good work of the Police Department and the research that they did, we ended up with this article. Is there anything I missed? Glenn?
No, I just would like to add that for many years, the Police Department really hasn't had a town bylaw to fall back on if others regulating noise. The issues that Beth was talking about were basically in the zoning bylaws, which relate to the construction issues that are enforceable through the various zoning boards or the building inspectors. And they were set up with the idea, I think the first one was approached, when they were going to do the light rail construction over at the shipyard in the old GSA building. So, they were just designated. And the problem that we've basically, as a Police Department, always said that we took a seven-to-seven stance, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, if others, what we seem to be, what we thought was reasonable for excessive noise. But we really didn't have any backbone put to that. We couldn't tell anybody that there's a town bylaw that says that. And one of the things in talking with Beth, that we talked about is that we want to have some uniform laws out there that apply to the whole town, but we also realized that there needs to be waiver systems put in place here for different types of events. They've talked about some of these waivers. The other thing is that we talked about the idea of if the planning board or the zoning boards put certain restrictions or other restrictions that may fall outside of this, that that would basically be authorized as an exemption. And because I think in the public forum of the zoning boards and the planning boards, that's basically the town agency, and I think they all get endorsed by the Board of Selectmen. So, we're not looking to undermine anything that they would set forth. It would just be basically more the idea of, and I think where we really fall into this more would be the idea of someone who has a band playing late at night, we would like to be able to say that you're in violation of the town bylaw, and you need to shut it off. Or, a lot of cases, we do have building construction that goes on, and some people like to do building, and I think anything after 7 o'clock is basically unreasonable. And even yard maintenance can go on after 7 o'clock. So, I think that's where we run into problems generally, and we've been able to generally just go down and talk to the people and say, "Hey, you're unreasonable. Could you knock this off?". But it would be nice to always say there's a bylaw that's in effect that would enforce what we're actually talking about.
And this is what other towns have, is how they've addressed it in the research that we've done, so...
Yes.
I have lots of questions, and I thank Beth for talking with me yesterday. I don't think we're going to have too many instances, as much as I'd like us to have them down in the South Industrial Park, of building light transportation vehicles, the kinds of sound and that. I'm troubled by what appears to be the, it's almost, you're casting a net over the entire town, and a band playing late at night, 10, 11 o'clock at night, to me, is an issue. Maybe not. You know, if you're really into Dropkick Murphy, and you like that kind of music, I don't want to see you 10, 11 o'clock. Come to me 2, 3 in the morning. I might negotiate with you. So, I think some of this is beauties in the eye of the beholder, and if you have small lots next to each other, you're going to have a lot more complaints. If you're sitting on a five-acre lot with a party, with a band, nobody's going to hear you. So, the enforcement of this, I see is a real problem. I see a huge amount of work in the selectmen's office, people getting permits. I misunderstood, until I talked to Beth yesterday, that anything after 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, would need a permit, or would be under scrutiny. And I don't know many weddings that end at 6:00 PM, outdoor weddings, or parties, and all day Sunday. So, you're basically excluding concerts. Our new group, Friends of Hangham Harbor, are going to want to do events down at the harbor. I think this needs a lot more work. I find what the zoning board and planning board does when you have significant smaller or large, depending on how you think this, and setting limits and criteria around noise and usage and lights, et cetera. I think that's very good, because that's in a single spot. How you translate that to the entire town, I'm not sure this is it, in a nutshell.
But, I mean, this warrant article is, basically exists in two areas of town. Can you point out to me what areas of town that you don't think deserves the same sort of protection?
I don't understand the protection. I'm concerned about the conservatory. They have concerts all year round. You can hear the concerts as you're driving in from Conservatory Park. I would consider that would probably be too loud. And the, to me...
I live in Conservatory, excuse me, and I don't hear them. I'm sorry, because of the way the design they put into effect to make it.
But if you're driving in, when you come into the road, that then you take the road up, and I can't remember which road that is, you can hear, is it Frank? Thank you. I get so confused there. It's like, follow the signs. You can hear the music, and as they get more into what the younger people are listening to these days, it's not chamber music. And that is going to be louder and louder. So, I'm worried about them. I'm worried about what's going to, in the context of this, and I'm not saying a noise law is not a good thing.
Well, do you have changes that you'd like to see made?
I would like to see somebody who understands noise. Okay.
Well...
Not just in the perception of, "This is too loud for me", but somebody that truly understands. Because if you look at, well, permit me, maximum permitted sound levels, you're going to, between 6:00 and 9:00 PM, are going to be reduced by five decibels. Is five the right number? Should it be seven? Should it be three? I don't know the answer to that. And what's good for one town may not be good for Hangham. Otherwise, we'd have one set of bylaws for the entire state. God forbid I said that. So, I think people who understand sound should look at this.
Well, that's what we did in the research.
Okay.
And the numbers that we picked were based on professionals giving us that guidance. So, we did do that. This wasn't the back of the envelope.
This also, those decibel hours are the existing bylaw that exists in town already, which worked for the shipyard and now has been then used for the DPW and Carlson Fields. And I think also, with Deputy Chief's hard work, he put together, under violations in Section 6, if anybody wants to look, characteristics and conditions on how they would judge if it's a violation. And he has nine different things, which was taken from another bylaw, that also gives them the opportunity, for example, like if you have somebody who you pull over for a DUI, and you don't have a breathalyzer, or they refuse to take a breathalyzer, you have certain characteristics in which you would determine if a, it was a violation. They, you know, look at their glassy eyes, they look at their slurred speech, they have them walk a line. This gives the Police Department the same sort of guidelines as to what the level of noise is, where the noise is, whether it's unusual, whether it's whatever. So, it gives them some rules and regulations and guidelines to find out if it is a violation. And also, as far as your business with the Conservatory Park, you know, they have an opportunity to come in to the selectmen and ask for, you know, a waiver, just like for a wedding, like come in, you people come for a liquor license, a one-day liquor license. You run them off like, you know, easy thing at the end of your selectmen's meetings. It's, you know, this, yes, yes, yes. And so, yes, it may mean that, but what I want to go back to is, the article merely takes the existing noise article and extends it to every resident.
Otherwise, we should do away with the other two?
Well, those were part of ZBA, right?
Well, there's an actual noise by law.
There's an active town meeting vote.
By this.
I think the clarification we need to make, though, is that the existing ones that are out there are zoning bylaws, not town bylaws, which is different. There is a difference between a zoning bylaw or a planning board bylaw than there is...
A general bylaw.
With a general bylaw.
Well, I'm not sure what the difference is, because they're both, they're passed by town meeting, and they're the law of the land, but you're saying the existing noise one is a zoning bylaw, whereas this is a general bylaw?
Correct.
A bylaw is enforceable and approved by the Attorney General's Office, and would be placed into it. So, there is a difference. Zoning bylaws, it's basically a building inspector that needs to do that, not us.
This gives the policeman a tool.
So, it's the enforcement that is different, I see. I see, I see.
And I think, I think, just in the process of working on this, you know, I'm obviously open to larger suggestions, because when we did look at this, there were articles that we pulled out, different areas, there were four pages long, that covered everything from weed whackers to snow blowers and lawn mowers, and I, you know, it can get very difficult. And reading some of the sound decibel things, there were towns that did break it down to different areas, such as residential, commercial bordering areas. And I think our effort here was just to put together something. It's, I think the Police Department would like to see something on there, whether this be the finished product or not. But I think it would be nice to have that bylaw out there, so that we could sort of enforce the loud music at nighttime, or the loud parties that may go on.
Well, I'd like to share some thoughts. I, it doesn't make sense to me to have a bylaw for one part of the town only. I do feel if we're going to have a noise bylaw, it should cover all residential areas, at least. Maybe you'd want to exempt industrial areas from all the noise, or something like that. I don't know. That may not be important, because if there's noise there at night, no one will complain. So, I think what I'm, I'm thinking a lot about how this would be used, and I think what we have to first understand is that no one's going to have reference to this law unless there's first a complaint. I mean, the police are not going to be out looking for people who are playing music too loud in their backyard. They're going to wait until the neighbor calls up before they...
Usually, they're going to complain for someone who's not invited.
And then, I think you've done some really great work together with your list of criteria that you take into consideration. It really gives the, it gives the enforcing officer at once some guidance and some reasons that they can offer to explain why this is not working out for the neighbors, or some reasons to say, "You know, this really doesn't rise to the level that our bylaw is against, and you really need to let it go". And so, I think that that's very helpful. That said, I'm not sure that this particular, as I talked to you on the phone today, Beth, and I appreciate your taking the time to talk to me, I'm not sure this particular bylaw is really, as it's written, is quite soup. There are some areas in it that seem odd, that seem, just seem odd to me. On the section of, like, maximum permitted sound levels, it says, "Section 2, maximum permitted sound levels. Sound measured at a lot line abutting a residential district DB, parentheses, A, close parenthesis, 55". My problem with that is that it's a law, and there is no verb in it. It says, it just says, "Sound measured at a lot line at a certain", and it doesn't say that is the maximum permitted level. It doesn't, doesn't say what that is, and it doesn't feel well-constructed to me. And then, it says, after that, it says "one", and then it lists some stuff, and there's no two or three. And it does look as if it was, pieces were pulled from here and there, and it wasn't well, you know, meshed to put together. In Section 3, under B, it refers to the applicant, which suggests to me, and Beth did confirm this, that it came from some of the ZBA decisions, but... to me, and Beth did confirm this, that it came from some of the ZBA decisions, but there's no applicant in, there's no applicant in this bylaw. So, that would need to change. There are a couple of definitions, like appropriate jurisdiction and enforcing person. Things are defined which are not, not used in the bylaw. So, that confused me. Why are we defining appropriate jurisdiction if it's not even referenced in the bylaw? And it just, so, it felt to me like it was not well-organized, or put together, which does not mean I think it could not be, in the end, if, if we work on it. And I would almost be inclined to recommend, you know, unless the advisory committee wants to take on wordsmithing this, or, or people may completely disagree with me and think this is, this is perfect the way it is. But unless people wanna, the advisory committee wants to do it, I could almost see, you know, setting up a committee of, of three people to, including a lawyer, to really-
Well, could we use Susan Murphy, who was the one who actually drafted this with us when we gave her the, that we wanted to basically, 'cause I know your section on Section 2 is literally the existing bylaw. And so, we didn't wanna change the existing bylaw, and I appreciate the fact that there is no verb in there.
Well, since you were replacing it, you, you, no reason why you couldn't change it.
We didn't, what we wanted to do was take the existing bylaw that seemed to be working in town, and just apply it to every area of town.
Right.
So, I didn't wanna start to change the wording, 'cause somehow it had gone through town meeting, and the two-thirds vote for zoning, and, so we used that.
I also could be completely off-base about this. Maybe a lawyer would look at this and understand, you know, it. But I do feel that citizens should also be able to, to read it and, and understand it.
That's a very good point. But that is literally a quote, and as you said-
Right. So, maybe if, maybe if we're doing it again, maybe we could improve it.
The second part, where the business about the applicant, is we use the zoning Board of Appeals' decision and restriction clauses for consistency purposes.
Right. But this isn't a zoning Board of Appeals-
If we take out that sentence, that would just eliminate that problem.
But what I'm saying is, there are a number of things in here that suggest to me that maybe we need to chew on it a little bit more, and get it-
I'm with Laura on that.
So, I'm not sure whether to recommend that we, the re, I, as to your suggestion that we use town council, I'll just remind you that taxpayers pay for town council, whereas you could go out to Hingham Square and throw a stone, and I bet you could find a lawyer who'd volunteer to help us with this.
Say, a nice volunteer lawyer?
Well, I just, I didn't know you had asked specifically to have these Warren articles drafted by council, to make sure that they were legally-
Yeah, absolutely. It may be legally enforceable, but it may not be the best that it can be. I guess that's what I'm saying.
And what I don't think you want is, if this thing were to pass, that the first challenge to it knocks the whole thing out. I'd also like to see a sound engineer, or someone that is familiar with noise, and how you measure it, and from what perspective.
I mean, one of the things about the, the old bylaw that you put right in here with the decibel levels and stuff, is if you, like, like Irma, I do not know what 55 decibel sounds like. So, this, this law doesn't, that part of the law doesn't give me any help in knowing whether I'm violating it or not. And it doesn't give the police any help either, because they're not gonna be out there with their meter, measuring things. They, you don't even have those meters, I'll bet.
Have those meters.
So, so, that, that part of the bylaw really is not of any use to either citizens or enforcers in, in getting a good result. Maybe you don't even need it.
What, how, is the perception here that you would outfit every cruiser with a decibel?
No, 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 no.
Okay. Just, just asking.
No, I think that's why that-
I, I think what, this is the first time that, you know, a citizen has come to us and said, like, that we need a town, an actual town bylaw. And we've gotta be careful between that distinction, between a town bylaw and a zoning bylaw.
Yes.
And like I said, it's, it's a pretty complicated thing. I, I agree with the idea of having a town bylaw. Because if you go and look in the town bylaws, there is, this Article 42 doesn't exist. It's a new article that would have to be put in there. And I, I wanna make that, clearly make that distinction between the zoning bylaws and-
Now, I understand what the distinction is, and I think it makes total sense to make it a general bylaw, because if somebody's having a loud party at midnight, nobody's gonna call the building commissioner. Or at least, we really hope they don't call the building commissioner. So, it just doesn't make sense to have the building commissioner be the enforcement officer for that, for that particular bylaw, I don't think.
And, and, you know-
And I think this is a really good start. I mean, especially the parts that you, that you work together on. I think the new stuff is working much better than the old stuff. So, maybe, maybe-
Well, maybe, let me, could we take this under advisement, and let's see how much revision we have to do, and then we'll bring it back. And if we, and if it's fixable, then we'll bring it back. And if it's not fixable, we won't.
Oh, I think it's fixable.
I do too. Can I, two things. Specifically, why did you exempt Sunday from everything? That you have to, your exemption excludes Sunday. And it stops at 6:00 PM on a Saturday. Well, that's when, kinda, most parties, Friday nights and Saturday nights.
The exemptions are literally the exemptions that were taken from the zoning restrictions, as far as they were. And then we decided, you know, when I talked with, actually, when the water pipe burst in front of my house, and Lieutenant Taylor was standing outside, as I was trying to go meet with Deputy Chief Olson and Mike Perino, he mentioned the fact that we need to make sure that there is usage of the playfields and whatnot, and that this was the existing stand that they used. So, if it included Sunday, I don't mind it including Sunday on that.
So, could I assume that this, this would exclude any kind of activities on the playing fields on a Sunday?
No, because most, most times, this 55 decibel, which is the standard for most, all of the bylaws for residential areas that we looked at, Belmont, Arlington, Lexington, ones that had noise ordinances, 55 seems to be the standard decibel.
Whatever that is.
And I agree with you. I probably know more than-
That allows, that allows, 'cause it's at your residential abutters, that allows you to have those activities and do those kinds of things.
As long as maybe you're not in Bradley Woods, where the lots are right next door to each other? Would that be?
It gets a little bit complicated with the decibel readings. I, I agree with you on that, because just looking at that myself, you do have to be a sound engineer. There's many different ways to measure it. And a lot of those measurements occur over a period of time. It's not the idea that you would just get, you're there for five minutes, you turn on the meter, and you got a 55 reading. It would have to occur over a period of time when they make these measurements, for like, an hour, or something like that. So, I think, I think what I'd like to see is probably some more work be put into this. The concept is great.
I think it is.
We support the concept. You know, trying to rush into getting an article in, I think we're on a, a good firm basis to get something started. And I think maybe the idea of getting more people into looking at this would definitely be helpful.
And I'd love to see hearings, some open hearings, to let people come in.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
'Cause some people don't really like to stand up at town meeting.
Yeah, and by then, it's kinda too late, if they would wanna, you know, if people would have ideas for how to modify the law.
Yeah.
You don't really want that happening on a four-town meeting, too much.
One last question. I did a real quick, become an expert in less than an hour, on noise bylaws. A number of the cities and towns exclude school and recreational activities.
Yes.
You haven't done that here at all.
No, mainly because we feel that this noise ordinance, in my opinion, is the existing noise ordinance that gives every residential area. And I ask you then, which areas of town would you think should not have the same noise protection at others?
Well, you've made a list of exemptions, and there are a number of things on it-
But there's no-
-but school and recreational activities are not.
Right.
School and rec, well, school and recreational activities are during the day, during, you know-
Eight to six.
Eight to six.
But your activities, the recital, and-
So, you just, as you look at noise, you say, should this neighborhood have a different noise ordinance than, you know, every other neighborhood? I feel like most of the policies, if you look at them, give the industrial park stricter rules. We're only asking that this policy be consistent for regulations for the police department, so that every neighborhood has the same quality of life and the same noise protection.
I think I'm with Laura.
Well, doing, replacing the existing law gives us an opportunity to revisit all of these issues, and probably, hopefully involve more citizens in the conversation as well.
So, do you think it would be, I mean, are there any areas of town that you feel shouldn't have the equal protection?
It's not about that. It's about what the protection is. What hours, what activities, what decibel levels, we, what protection everybody should have. Not that some area should have different, different rules than others, I think.
And I'd be interested in, if we do set up a committee, for that committee to talk to some of the other towns that truly, that do have, and find out why they very specifically excluded school and recreational activities.
So, we'll take this under advisement, and once again, call on our staff to help us organize the way forward here.
But it, of course, speaking with, not on my own, but maybe Beth could chime in on this, but I think the idea of expanding a committee to look at this, I think, would be a good idea, because I'm by no means an expert on this. And I think that it's something if we couldn't get into this-
You've made a great start.
If we couldn't get into this town meeting, I think we should be pushing it, we should be looking at it. And have, have something that did have the public input, ready for the next town meeting.
Okay, this is a petition article, so we'll be going forward.
It will be on, it will be on, it will be on the warrant regardless. But, you know, so it'll, you know, how this, maybe we can help jump-start some discussion, and it'll probably be up to the advisory committee to decide if it's really ready to go, if they would recommend, if they would have something they would recommend to town meeting or not. But maybe we can help get starting.
But I think this has been assigned to this noise ordinance for the advisory committee.
Okay. Well, they, that's sure to happen soon.
Excellent. And I think we've given you enough questions.
Yep.
If not, I'll, I'll think up ten more.
Well, you know my phone number.
I do. And thank you for the time.
Well, thank you for, thank you for the work that all of you've done on this. I really think we can get some more of this. Thank you.
So, does this mean if I wanna have Dropkick Murphy's over to my house, I should do it wicked soon, for a party?
No, it's just, you need to come in and get a, you know, an exemption if you want.
Just no amplification, I guess, would be okay. I don't know how they could play without it, so.
Okay. The next article is the, sorry, the petition article on the Town Forum Study Committee, and the lead petitioner is Mr. Clark. So, are you gonna speak to this?
Jim.
Mr. McMillan? Okay. I'll invite the town historian to please fill us in, because we need to be filled in.
That's delegation, Jim, at its best.
Alec McMillan, 217 Main Street. I originally had discussion with Mr. Clark about this when I was chairman of the Historical Commission, and he had come up with some compelling data relating to the numbers of people who were buried in unmarked graves at the poor farm, which is now a, has a residential complex sitting on top of it, and with the insurance company next door. The town's involvement in this is kinda circuitous over the years. Our, our town and other towns brought over with them from England the idea that you had responsibility to take care of the unfortunates who couldn't take care of themselves within your, within your community. The problem was that this costs money, and what, what was happening, this was through the 1600s into the 1700s, they would keep a beady eye on anybody entering the town who didn't appear to have a great deal of money in their wallet, and tell them to, you know, have lunch, but then keep on moving. Because the idea was that if anybody stayed, they would then become a public charge. And eventually, about 1740, I think it was, the King of England mandated in Massachusetts that each town build or maintain an almshouse for the, for the needy. And along, about 45, 50 years later, Hingham got around to building an almshouse, which was over where, there's now a Citgo Station over on the, in the center. And that served for a number of years, and then it was too small. Then they built a new almshouse, which is where the G.A.R. Hall is now. That was a brick building, and it was a good-sized building. But that burned to the ground after about 20 years. And then the town appointed a special committee to look into it.
We're good at that.
It's probably still around, Alec.
And the committee looked at available land, and so on. And there was a parcel down on Beale Street with 43 acres in it, which they recommended that the town acquire. And, and the latest thinking about these things was to have a farm, where the, these people could come and work off their, work off their, their obligation to the town by actually working in the fields. And the, and when this building was built, it was the biggest building in town. It was three stories high, 72 feet long, and a substantial building with, with walls down the middle to separate the males and the females. But this served the town for more than 100 years, from 1832, when it was built, really until the onset of World War II, when the Navy took the land, and, and with it, at least at that point, our almshouse. And this, the people in the almshouse were elderly, was a combination of a nursing home, an insane asylum, a drunk tank, and whoever they, whoever they didn't know what else to do with somebody, sent them down to the poor farm. There were, there were cells in the basement for the fractious, the people who didn't obey the ban on strong liquors at the almshouse, and so on and so forth. So, in any event, the, this building, after the Navy left and the town acquired the land again, what was, the use that this building at that point was empty, and it was Project Turnabout, which was a sort of private operation fulfilling some of the same functions, which took over that building. And they made very few changes in it, over the years, almost none, until they relocated out of Hingham, and then that land was sold for the, for real estate development, and for the, and to the insurance company. Now, if you go out behind the insurance company, and you go down the slope toward the marshland, you'll see-
In the park, right in the park?
Well, no, behind, drive up behind the insurance company.
So, on the insurance company land?
Yeah, out on their, their parking lot to the rear of their building. And it, they have a bus there. And you go down the slope, you see this huge granite tomb, which was where they stuck them in the wintertime, until they could-
You believe that?
Get a, get a shovel into the soil. And I think it's gonna outlast the pyramids. It's a very solid structure down there. But, but there were, over the years, between 18, 1786, the first almshouse, and the building of the, of this one in 1832, I think about 120 people who died there. And they, where they were buried, I don't know. You don't know where they were buried? But, but I have no indication that there is a pauper section in any of the cemeteries. I've been looking around at that. But when the, when the new almshouse was built, and they had 43 acres, and tillable fields, and so on, when people died, they were buried right there on site. We know how many there were, or the, roughly how many there were, because Mr. Clark has come up with the death certificates, and there were quite a few of them, over the years. And it would say, died at-
Yeah, I have the body in hand, and plenty more will be done up now.
It would say, died at Beale Street, or Poor Farm, or whatever it is. But there, there are no marked graves down there. And his feeling, and I think it was, he made a compelling case, that the town had an obligation to memorialize these people, maybe 200 or more, in, in unmarked graves down there. Now, it's too late to locate exactly where these bodies are buried, as the saying goes. I mean, one would, one would maybe assume that that should have been done at some point in the past, but it's too late to do it now. So, that, I think the focus should be on, on finding out roughly how many people there were, and who they were, if possible, and then constructing a memorial to them, somewhere in the vicinity, that the town would, would build. I think that would be appropriate. And this idea was, of course, I was, when I left the Historical Commission, I was unable to follow through on it, but in- to follow through on it, but in the article last year for the, the sequel to CPC articles, they gave a certain amount of money to the Historical Commission to fund small, ongoing activities that couldn't be identified right at the, at the beginning. And this was named as one of them. It says, "Examples of potential projects that could be undertaken in the coming fiscal year include determining the location of the Beale Street almshouse and Potter's Field", blah, 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 and various other things. So, I think the Historical Commission has in mind that this is something that should be done, it's just a question of making it a priority. And I think that's the purpose of this article, was to suggest that this information is out there and something should be done about it. You want to add anything to that, Jim?
Well, it's becoming fashionable as you research it all over the country. A lot of places are going and memorializing these cemeteries, if you will. The Hingham one, it grew and it shrunk because they bought, they, one time acquired Stoddard's Neck and then they sold it back to Mr. Bradley for twelve hundred dollars or whatever a couple of years later. The town determined they didn't need it and weren't going to use it. But at any rate, it would indicate that they're, they're on the site somewhere and researching, the insurance company moved their building, I think, because of-
Yeah.
-the tomb or whatever.
Yeah.
But ask me some questions, I'll be able to answer.
Where do you, where do you, where would you like to see this memorial placed?
Well, I think it should go right on, on the street to identify the park. It's fifty acres, it's a fifty acre site.
Maybe a little early to determine that. I think alternatives have to be considered in the type of sign that you're talking about, but as, as near as possible to the area so that people should be able to read the sign and imagine what, when it was like.
Yeah, you'll know what the area is, identify it.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you, you know, it's-
As near as possible.
It's gone in, it's outside, out of mind.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
That's, that's where I was going.
I mean, take forty acres, put it in the middle or whatever and walk away.
I would think the place where most people would be most likely to be able to stop and see it, you know? You know, there's that stone on, in the center that's right up on Main Street that with, with a marker on it. I have no idea what it says because I'm too afraid to cross Main Street to go look at it and there's no sidewalk there, so let's put it where people, you know, are going to see it.
You have to make it visible, I mean, it's not entirely-
That's something for the Historical Commission and others that they might consult with and the selectmen to think about. But the hope is that some attention could be given to this this year and that within the next year that this is a project that could be done and laid to rest.
Yeah, I just felt that it got missed in the-
Yeah.
It, it came about in the three seventy-fifth anniversary. I couldn't believe there was a hundred people on the committee and nobody touched on a hundred and fifty years of town culture.
Okay.
And that's-
Well, he, I think-
It kind of got away.
He's done some very valuable work to dramatize this by coming up with all of those death certificates over the years. So, I think a lot of the research maybe has been done. We should do a report that calls people's attention to what, what's transpired here and then have an appropriate sign, an appropriate location and hopefully be back before you to discuss that later in the year.
Wouldn't it be kind of neat to have all the people's names? Eh, never mind.
Because then if you leave somebody out-
And others that have not been identified.
Alec, how long do you think this is going to take? It sounds like Jim's done a lot of good work and it's really just-
I don't think, I don't think it should take very long at all.
Shouldn't it?
The problem is that the Historical Commission has to make it a priority and I hesitate to tell them what to do because I knew they have so many responsibilities and the problem is this doesn't seem like something that's got to be done tomorrow.
Well, I did hear that they endorsed the concept. That's, they did, so.
Right, I was just going to ask if there were any Historical Commission members who wanted to weigh in on here, who would like to-
They didn't have a problem.
Well, I thought I would ask them.
Well, we, we heard Bob Curley, one Grissmill Lane, Vice Chair of the Historical Commission. Mr. Clark, Mr. Hershey have appeared any number of times before the Historical Commission and have brought this to our attention. I think the Historical Commission generally supports the idea, thinks it is well worthwhile to do. Included a request for CPC funds last year, as was mentioned. We have had a busy year with a number of other demolition delay issues and that sort of thing, but I think we would like to see this happen certainly within the next twelve months.
Oh, great.
In terms of an appropriate site location and memorial that would memorialize these citizens of Hingham that were in the town, that aren't presently memorialized.
Okay, thanks.
Why do we, do we have to go to town meeting? Why can't we ask the Historical Commission to do this?
Well, actually, at this point in time, it's a petition.
Well, it's a petition.
I know.
Might as well opine.
Yep.
I mean, I'm, I think it's a great idea. I mean, the fact that a piece of our history got lost and we're trying to draw attention to it, that's what Hingham is all about and-
And I think, and I under, I take your point, but I, I think there may be even some value in achieving our goal here, to have this on the warrant of town meeting.
Just to get the attention.
Now, it's probably going to come up at eleven oh eight on the last, I think it's the, if it's not the last article, it's the second.
I'll tell you what time in a minute.
But, but if there's an opportunity, if there's an opportunity to-
That's a good point.
To tell people about it, we, we think that would be worthwhile.
Well, you know, I, I'm aware that unlike many towns, we don't actually have any town cemeteries to maintain and we're lucky that way because that's a hard thing to do, but this seems, really seems like the, the least we could do in terms of our obligation to these citizens and I, it seems like a great idea to me. And, and since the, the Historical Commission's all for it, no harm in passing this article at town meeting, as far as I can tell, so.
I think it's great, I hope.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to make a motion?
That's right.
I'll make a motion that we recommend Article M and the Town Farm Study Committee be formed to the Advisory Committee.
To the, to the Historical Commission.
Historical, no, I'm, I'm recommending it to the Advisory Committee that we, you know, they'll decide. So, the motion, Kirsten, Kristen is, will recommend to, positive, positively to the Advisory Committee to act on Article MM.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are up to, let's do this one little vote, one day liquor license.
Oh.
I'll make a motion, we approve a one day liquor license for Robert Weeks for the Derby Academy Teachers Book Club meeting at Red Eye Roasters, Three Otis Street, Hingham on Wednesday, February twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen, from four thirty to six thirty P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Selectman Town Administrator reports, Town Administrator, welcome back.
Thank you.
Did I miss one?
CPC.
Oh, man. I'm going off my game, I'm sorry.
I will introduce everybody to Laura Barnes. Let's do this again.
See what happens when we let you go away for a couple days vacation?
Yeah, just get all-
It falls apart.
Okay, next item on our agenda before the Selectman Town Administrator's reports is to vote on the Community Preservation Warrant Articles, which we did not vote on when we heard them. We, let's see.
The latest revisions are in your folder.
Okay, latest revisions. Here we go. Okay. Did we not approve, are these the three that we did not approve?
Yes, you did approve A.
A, that's what I thought, okay.
So, it's B and C.
B and did we act on C? No.
No.
Okay. All right, are you ready to vote?
I am.
Any comments or questions for the public before we do that? Mr. Copeland, come on up, join us.
This is a great team, these two. Oh, everybody's hands on the table, here we go.
Thank you. I just had one question about the noise ordinance. Is my wife called about my snoring or?
Perhaps she's talking about that.
She has talked about that.
Only, only if the windows are open.
Tell her to get her meter.
There you go.
In the interest of your time, we won't belabor the points. You, you've had the description of, of the articles that we're recommending from the CPC's perspective. There are two modifications from what you've seen previously and the modifications are, first, with regard to the appropriation for the Community Preservation Committee Administration Fund. And we have provided an article requesting thirteen thousand dollars to be used. We found out today, we had some bad information from, we had some bad information, it was confirmed that, from Sue Nickerson, that that number should actually be twenty thousand, but the committee has not voted that yet, so I'm not sure that we can formally recommend that to you because we as a committee have not yet, you know, ratified that twenty thousand dollar number. So, I guess we'll come back to you with that at another point in time.
Well, perhaps we'll just take a consensus feeling about it and punt it to the Advisory Committee on that, on that one.
And we'll vote it subsequently and-
Unless, unless there's objection to the, to the higher number, we'll just-
I mean, the way we got, we went from ten to thirteen last night and-
How'd it go to twenty?
Pardon me?
How'd it go to twenty?
Well, the mathematics we had last night were, were incorrect. We were assuming the apparel amount was a, you know, twice a month payment, a payment was actually a weekly payment, so that's the difference between the two numbers, just, you know, proper accounting and, you know, that was an error on our part, not, not Sue Nickerson's part, so. And the other modification is you may see that we've deleted a request for appropriation for Thaxton Park and that is a result of, the committee had voted to recommend that subject to Town Council's approval of the, the nature and the scope of the work to be done and whether or not it was consistent with the CPA legislation. Town Council told us it was inconsistent and so therefore, you know, we voted last night not to make a recommendation in that regard and to consider whether or not some subsequent, you know, modification or subsequent recommendation should be considered, but at this point, we don't have one for your consideration. So, that's why we've gone from ten to nine recommended articles and the modification on the Administrative Fund is purely, shall we say, a Scrivener's error at this point.
Okay. Okay, so maybe we'll accept, unless there are questions or comments?
No, I, I have a comment after the vote.
After, okay, well then, let's take a, a-
How should we do this?
On Article, on Article B, on, as-
Excluding Item One. Okay, I move we recommend to the Advisory Committee the CPC projects as shown in Item B, excluding Item One.
I think we want to include Item One.
We'll include Item One and then we will-
And let the Advisory, okay.
Yeah, we'll just make a note that, that, that there was no objections heard from the Selectman to a number of twenty-five, twenty thousand dollars should the CPC choose to recommend it to the Advisory.
Then I will, we'll add that at the end, all right? I will move that we recommend to the Advisory Committee CPC Articles B and C.
Second.
Subject two?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And just let the minute show that, that no Selectman voiced an objection to an amount of twenty thousand dollars to, for CPC Administrative Fund.
If I may, two, two points. At Tuesday's meeting, we discussed the issue of the struggle that the CPC has in identifying and recommending affordable housing projects and this has been an ongoing issue for them to deal with. And I raised the suggestion that perhaps there was, since the Affordable Housing Trust was in the process of looking at their allocation plan, that we figure out a way to join forces so that we could be more effective in our ability to address affordable housing. And the sense of the committee, we didn't take a formal vote, but the sense of the committee was this would be a good thing as a long-term project to address perhaps for the, in the, in the coming year. There are some legal-
So, have some joint meetings to talk about it?
Have some joint meetings to talk about it, understand better how other towns have handled this, who's accountable, what's the process to make it, to make it work, but it certainly seems it's an opportunity to bring our resources together and be more effective because it just seems it makes more sense to that. And we are not meeting our commitment on the CPC side to affordable housing objectives, so let's see if there's a better way we can do this by having a better use of joint resources, so. But I, and I appreciate the committee's support, support on that. On Article, I think it's Article C, there was an issue, I understand our friends that there he is, okay, there's, there's Mark Cullens is here. There is an issue that is not on our vote list tonight, but as you know, the approach to Article C was to do some private funding and to be, and as well as to secure support from the town on that article. But they would like to get started on the private funding that they've already collected to do some work. And there's an issue that comes up with giving them permission to begin that work on the, on the front of, of the, of the, of the Hingham Historical Building that they're addressing and that's to get, to begin to deal with the steps and begin that work. And they, they've talked about it with, with the Hingham Downtown Association and they're, they have voiced no objections to this and it would appear that the best time to do this is in the month of March through May over an eight week period, which has a one week potential delay built into it for weather. And they need our permission to proceed to dedicate four parking spaces while, in order for this work to, to begin. And I, I think it's a demonstration of their commitment to the project by using their money before the town meeting gets to say they're committed to making it happen, but there's a practical issue and they want to get started in two weeks, I think, Mark, is that right? So, they need the permission from us to do that, to dedicate the four spaces. I did discuss the issue with the DPW and they were okay with that and I think, I'd just like to put it forward for your, our consideration.
Okay.
Is anything I missed, Mark?
No, thank you. Have we talked to both the police chief and the fire chief and specifically, because I, we would like to see this get started, Hingham Institute for Savings and Carol Anne's and that strip, because they're going to be the most impacted. No, no direct.
No direct.
I would ask you to do that, only because it's, that's a very busy area?
Well, we did it, we did it this time because it's, we went to the HDA, that's the parent group. We weren't trying to pick out any one businesses, it was to get it started. And I'm assuming if we could do a contingent vote, I'm assuming we get their blessing, this is the best time of the year to do it.
Understood, but I'd also like to hear from police and fire, because I don't want to be on their bad side.
I had a conversation with the police and they were okay with it and Mark, and I had a conversation with Mark and he was okay with it, but if you'd like to-
So, they're fine with it?
Yeah. And it's this time of year is the critical aspect, getting it done before Memorial Day is, is, is the, is the issue.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Did you want to make a motion?
Make, I, I, do you have the language we need, Mr. Cullens? No, I think we just want to make a motion to grant permission to the Hingham Historical Society to begin with their project work on Main Street.
Well, to, to use four parking places for the period of March?
For the duration of the construction period.
Beginning?
March.
Nineteenth.
March nineteenth, okay.
No earlier than March.
No earlier than March nineteenth, okay.
Before we vote, can I ask you, is there any other alternative to using the four parking spaces?
Yes, I, I'm sorry, you really should.
Thank you.
Because I went and looked at it again. You know, when I was with you, it looked so simple and then I went and looked at it again. There's a lot of space.
Welcome back.
Mark Cullens, forty-four Spring Street. The, the, we need a staging area, a lot of material is going to have to be removed, a lot of material is going to be brought in. So, the four spaces may be a generous amount, we may not need it, but it makes sense to take, ask for and have permission to use the, enough to be able to not run into a bottleneck and create more congestion. It'll be for a couple of weeks, it'll, for a month or so, it's going to be congested down there.
And when you and I were looking at the space, the fire hydrant is right there.
That's going to make it harder.
Yeah, but that's, yes, it is, but that's, you know, the occupational hazard of a construction site, up to the contractor to make allowances for that.
Okay, thanks.
There are trees to be removed, it's not just as simple as, as a-
No, no, we don't know that. No, no, we don't know that.
Oh, dear.
Has that changed again?
I want to be out of town for that one.
Well, no, it's not, it's just not been determined. We, we need, we'll be bringing an arborist in to look at the, both the condition of the trees and the impact of the excavation on the trees.
I thought you had done that already, okay, I stand corrected.
And you know, Randy, our Superintendent of the DPW is the tree, the official tree.
Yes.
These are, these are our trees.
Oh, cool.
And I, just to clarify, all of this construction is being done on private property.
Yeah.
Yes.
Of course.
But the, the equipment to do the work is going to, the work is going to be done from the Main Street, from Main Street and the sidewalk area. So that's the, the public area, the, and all of the, from the, the stone wall that is there back is, is private property.
Well, that does raise a question for me about the sidewalk, whether it.
We've, we've been talking with Roger, Harry Sylvester, this is, this understood issue, and the sidewalk will be replaced.
Yeah, I was also thinking about pedestrian traffic, will that also be?
It will be impacted.
There will need to be a detail at certain points in time.
Yes, that's right, and we're planning for.
Oh, so a detail to facilitate pedestrian.
That's right.
You won't need to block it off all the time.
No, there will be, it will be blocked off, and that's why you'll need a, a detail because people proceeding down that sidewalk won't be able to go move through that construction. So it's the four street parking spots on the street, all the way in across the sidewalk.
Okay.
That area's going to be blocked off, and that's why you'll need a detail during certain points in time to help pedestrians move around that.
But the, the HDA's comment was doing it at this time of the year is less impactful on the entire community.
That's right.
Than waiting to do it.
So this is the right time to do it.
This is the right time. And that's the, that's the reason they're bringing you this evening, so we don't fall behind.
Okay, we have a motion, I believe.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can't wait to sit.
I know.
And stuff, eat my ice cream cone.
That's going to be cool.
Where's Jim Watson? Jim's been after this.
I know, this is his private project.
Got it?
Yeah. Okay, now, I do believe we are ready for Selectmen and Town Administrator Reports.
I have a brief report. As you know, I haven't been in for a few days now, but I did have an opportunity to meet with Randy Sylvester, our DPW Superintendent, and Harry Sylvester of the Public Works Department to begin a discussion about our performance and some of the issues that we had in dealing with the recent storm, Nemo. And I, I wanted to start out by saying that a look inside to how we performed is no way, in my opinion, an indication that, you know, someone did something wrong or the DPW wasn't up to par. That's absolutely not the case, it's just what good organizations do. As I mentioned to Randy, that, you know, when the Patriots came back from London with a 42-7 shellacking, I'm sure Mr. Belichick looked at the tapes to make sure that we couldn't do better. And that's essentially what we're doing now. And so I want to make really clear that, you know, the folks down there, they worked tirelessly, they did a 36-hour shift before they broke. But there were some things that we noticed, and we got quite a few complaints from people that our roads weren't what they usually are during a storm. Of course, it goes without saying that this wasn't a usual storm. And it wasn't usual for a couple of reasons, one of which was the consistency of the snow and the pace with which it came down. So some preliminary observations were that the type of plows that we are using, that we've utilized very successfully now for some time, they're angle plows and they're, they're movable, and they're very efficient for our smaller streets and moving snow that is usually under two feet. When the snow comes in over two feet, it starts cascading over the plows, and when they move it into the, the banks, they have a lot of difficulty. So the DPW is exploring buying just the plow blades to put on their larger vehicles when they know the storms are going to come in at a higher pace. That was one of the preliminary. And again, I want to stress, these are all preliminary, it's just a conversation that we had today. So in fairness to any real review of our, our performance, needs to take a little bit more time, and I just haven't had the chance to spend at it. The other issue that occurred was when the ban on motor vehicle traffic was lifted on Sunday, preliminary reports showed that a lot of people left their residences and moved their cars onto the streets. And there was still snow on, especially on the side streets. And what happens when a car travels across some snow, it packs it down in those tire tracks. And then if the plow comes back over it, it is harder when it's the wet, heavy-packed ice snow that they had to get it off the ground. And so the snow, the plows were having difficulty, they had to be pulled back, we had the salt to allow it to dissolve and then go back on it. And, you know, that caused a little bit of a, a problem. And those are the two initial preliminary findings we found, but we will look a little bit harder in the next two weeks to give people better answers. In terms of the storm that we expect this weekend, we do not expect more than a foot of snow, and they are all prepared and ready to go.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Anything else?
That's all I have for today.
No.
We were just here 48 hours ago, so how busy have we been?
Just one thing, the storm that Ted is talking about, Nemo, is the third, I was quite surprised with this, the third largest in recorded history to hit the area.
If I may, this is for all of us, not, the Assistant Town Administrator gave me this notice that on Sunday, March 3, at 1:00 p.m. in the Sanborn Auditorium, we will have, will host the town forum that was canceled as a result of, of the Nemo storm. And that will begin at 1:00 and we expect it to last till about 3:00. And we'll discuss such issues as the finance, the fiscal, fiscal year 2014 budget, where we are on the Aquarian Water Acquisition Study, and the Government Study Committee, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I talked to you about the CPC, and as I said, I thought that was a very positive response from them, from last night, so.
Okay. If there is nothing else, then I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss, maybe somebody should read the motion.
Okay, I move, we adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the acquisition of real property, since an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we will not be returning to open session.
Good day.
Thank you, good night, thanks.
Good night, everyone.